Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Let's see if this guy can get on. There we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, November 9 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Happy 13th birthday to my son Max. He's a teenager. He's a man today. So, Max, I'm sure you're not listening. Happy birthday, buddy. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen? Kylie?
Here.
Knightzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
All right, we're honored to have with us for the first time, I believe, Pastor Ryan Lumley to give our invocation tonight. He's with Church at the Gate, so I'd ask that you would rise for his invocation and stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Hey, welcome, everybody. I just wanted to give, you know, the Bible talks about giving honor where honor is due, and I just wanted to thank our council and our mayor for the last year and a half of the decisions that you've all had to make during a pandemic. And for sure, you probably all don't see eye to eye politically, even in other issues, too, but yet you guys are making this sacrifice, and we live in a city that is flourishing. You know, sometimes we forget that when you look around and you just, you know, it's normal for Sioux Falls to flourish. But I just think a lot of that comes back to the decisions that you all make and the tough decisions and the sacrifices that you all make. I'm thinking tonight's a Tuesday night. You probably have kids that have extracurriculars going on, and here you are, making decisions for our city. So I just want to say we're a blessed city because of the decisions you make. I even heard about a guy that's been in ministry for 40 years. He lives down in Missouri. And he told me for his 40th wedding anniversary, they came to Sioux Falls to just get a breath of fresh air and come and be a city that they love. And so, I mean, they've been all over the world. They could have gone anywhere, and they came to Sioux Falls. And so I think that speaks to who we are as a city, who, how our council is, how our mayor is. And, you know, I'm a man of faith. Also, I'm a pastor. I don't, I'm not naive to the fact that God's in charge, too, that God has His hand on this city and that we're a blessed city. So I just love that. I love in South Dakota that, under God, the people rule. It's so awesome that we recognize that. So I just want to leave you guys with a verse that God just put on my heart, especially for the council. And like I said, it couldn't have been easy the last year and a half, but it's kind of fitting for this time of year around Christmas. This is kind of like a Hallmark Bible verse, but it goes, comes from Isaiah 9. It says that "unto us a son is born, unto us a child is given, and the government shall be on his shoulders." And so I know in leadership it gets hard. I know it sometimes, decisions are unbearable at times. It's just like, what am I going to do? But I just, I know that verse says that the government's on his shoulders. So when it gets hard, like, you can lean on God, and He is going to help you. So I'm going to pray for you, and I've already taken way too much time. So, so God, I just thank you. I thank you for Sioux Falls. I thank you for this council, God, that comes together week in and week out to make decisions, big decisions and little decisions. I thank you that you care about it all. And so would you just let them breathe in encouragement today? Would you revitalize all of them and let them just feel your love, God, tonight? And I just pray for your hand over this, this meeting tonight. We love you, God. Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Pastor Lumley, for your invocation. We'll move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Are there any changes?
Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote there, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item nine, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Sale.
Mr. Mayor.
Amendment? Go ahead, Counselor Jensen.
I'd like to motion to amend by placing Agenda Item 22 immediately after Item 10.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to move that item as proposed there. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Just a moment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, before we vote. One second.
I just want to make sure that it reads, "Motion to amend by placing Agenda Item 22 immediately before Agenda Item 10." Is that correct?
Okay. Correct. That's the motion?
That was the intent.
And that's the second. Great. All right, let's vote on that, then.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Back to the main motion, then, as amended. Any other changes to make there? All right, let's vote on the main motion, then.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Before we move on, just want to review how public input works for our meetings here. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless we're considering an item for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input, at the end of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. So with that being said, we'll move on to the Item 22, which was moved by amendment.
Item 22 is deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, November 2, 2021. A resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of 41 Ellis Edition 14832, 2021. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. This is the private applicant, 41 Ellis LLC.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is Brady Hyde with Empire Homes. It's located south of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about 44 acres in size. This is the preliminary subdivision plan, and then the following item would be the rezoning for this specific subdivision. The original proposal, as shown in front of you, did show the Collector Street at the required access point on 41st Street. However, it did show the road then going to the property owner's property to the west. The property owner indicated at the first reading that they did not want that, or the road to go onto their property because of the undue cost that they would have to do as part of the Collector Street. Therefore, the developer shifted the road onto his property, as seen in this one, and this is the plan that we're going forward with tonight. Staff did meet with the property owners to the west, the clients, and then some of the representatives on November 4. They still had major concerns that the Collector Street wasn't shown on the property line between Brady's property and then their property to the west. They also had concerns about the sewer and water connections being on 43rd Street, then from Ronzik Avenue. We also did meet with the applicant that same day and indicated those concerns of the neighbors to the applicant. He indicated that the option to put that street on the property line, straddling both properties, would not work with the timing of development. He's looking to develop farther east first and then go to the west, and that he would like to come forward with you tonight with this plan that we have presented here, with Ronzik Avenue shifting to the east entirely on Brady's property. Staff does feel that this plan that is before you tonight does meet those minimum requirements, as indicated in our subdivision ordinance, that they are providing the access point where it's supposed to be located on 41st Streets and access to the neighbor's property. And then also, they're providing the required water and sewer connections on 43rd Street, as I indicated. That is why staff is bringing this proposal forward to you for council consideration tonight. We do have representatives from engineering, traffic, and sewer, if you have specific questions for them.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item? Come on forward this time. All right, council, you have any questions for Jason here to, come on up. If I call, if I call for public input, please come up. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Ten Haggen, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Rick Dunlap. 4101 Southwest Port Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm with Key Real Estate, Westwood Valley, RBD Homes, and Westward 8. I've been a developer in Sioux Falls for over 26 years, and I have participated in development of over 600 acres of land. And I'm here to represent the clients, the owners of the adjacent property to the proposed 41st Ellis Edition. In my opinion, the approval of a preliminary plan, as it is currently proposed, would limit the client's property of development and should not be approved. City staff and the developer post signs on the 41st Ellis Edition property for rezoning as it moves to be heard at the Planning Commission meeting. At that time, the clients did not realize that a preliminary plan also accompanies the rezoning request. When the clients saw that earthwork was being, was beginning on the 41st Street Ellis Edition, they approached me and asked if I could help them attain a plan for the development of the 41st Street Ellis property. I searched online and found a copy of the preliminary plan on the city council agenda, and I notified the clients immediately that we needed to meet to discuss the proposed 41st Street Ellis Edition. At that time, the preliminary plan proposed that the major traffic collector, Ronzik Avenue, would be placed entirely on the client's property once it was south of 41st Street. I immediately contacted city staff to ask how a major collector could be directed off the property line and onto a single property owner. At that time, city engineering staff told me that the developer had contacted the property owner and that the client ground was not seizable. The clients had no interest in doing development, and the clients were agreeable to the road being completely on their property. The City of Sioux Falls sanitary sewer basin map shows the northeast portion, or the, yeah, northeast portion of the client's property is seizable, and thus can be developed. Per city ordinance, the location of major streets shall conform to the official major street plan. The collector shall be developed along or between property lines so that both landowners can share in the cost, as well as having access to the collector. This is a copy of the Sioux Falls Major Street Plan that locates the major collector on the property line. The fact of the matter is, the clients were never contacted by the developer. The developer started the process of annexation at city council on November 3, 2020. An entire year has passed, and the developer has never contacted or asked to present development plans to my clients, the clients. I'm also wondering if the property owners to the south of 41st Street Ellis Edition, with the current layout, are aware that they will have to absorb full burden of a major collector or the property owners to the southwest will not have direct access to the major collector. After making our concerns known to city staff, I was present at the first reading for the rezone on the 41st Street Ellis property. I made it clear at that the clients could not support full burden of cost of the major collector, Ronzik Avenue. After the first reading, I continued to contact city staff on the status of the development. It wasn't until four hours prior to the second reading that I was provided with a revised preliminary plan for 41st Street Ellis. At this time, the developer had revised the plan to show the major collector on his property. The clients still objected to this revised plan and spoke at the second reading, even though the item was to be deferred. The day following the deferral, we asked for a meeting with city staff that was, and was able to meet with them on Thursday, November 4. In our discussions with city staff, we were told that the development plans meet the minimum standards for development and that the reason the developer had shown Ronzik Avenue on his property was because he was concerned that the clients would not participate in the development of Ronzik Avenue if shown on the property line. City staff informed me, the clients, that they were meeting with the developer later that day, and they would, they would let me know how the meeting went.
So, Rick, you're out of time. Do you, you think you can wrap it up in 60 seconds here?
Okay. After the meeting, I further discussed with the clients their options for development. The clients did not understand why the developer did not locate Ronzik Avenue on the adjoining properties. That's when we began to talk about doing development. The clients or engineer and myself contacted staff last Friday, did not hear from engineering last Friday. On Monday morning, I contacted the city engineer to let him know and stated to him at that time that the clients are willing to participate in the construction of Ronzik Avenue as long as it is located on the adjoining property line. The city engineer contacted me yesterday evening and said we would contact the developer this morning and let me know his response. This afternoon, the city engineer told me that the developer is open to relocating, relocating the road to the joining property line, but does not want to be delayed in the process. Since we do not want to cause the developer any further delay, I'm here representing the clients to request the city council defer the preliminary plan again until the developer proposes a plan with Ronzik Avenue on the joining property line, as stated by the city ordinances. Collector shall be developed along or between property lines so that both landowners can share in the cost, as well as access to the collector. 41st Street is a major arterial road, and Ronzik Avenue is located on the half-mile location. That means the intersection will have a median opening and a traffic signal when needed. These items, as well as full access to the major collector, what bring value to a development, the property. I brought a concept sketch of a potential way the clients can develop their property. As you can see, full access to the major collector is needed, and it does not put an undue burden on the adjacent property owner. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick.
I know we covered many things.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up.
Mayor Ten Haggen?
Good evening.
Members of the council? Thank you for allowing us to speak again tonight on the 41 Ellis Edition. My name is Cindy Klein Robinson, and I represent Klein Properties Limited. We own the 159 acres of property to the west of the proposed 41 Ellis Edition. The annexation for the 41 Ellis Edition property was heard by the city council on November 3, 2020. It has been a complete year since the annexation, and we have not once been contacted by the developer to discuss the preliminary plan. Unfortunately, we did not realize that the plan presented and approved by Planning Commission placed the major collector entirely on our property, south of 41st Street. Having realized this and that the entire burden of the road cost, south of 41st Street, would be our responsibility, we would have immediately contacted city staff in opposition to this plan. Since we have met with the city staff on the proposed 41 Ellis Edition plan and let them know that the full burden of cost was not acceptable to us, a revised plan was presented to us by city staff that shows the major collector located entirely on the 41 Ellis Edition property. This is the plan being presented tonight. City staff told us that the reason that the major collector was placed entirely on 41 Ellis Edition property was that the developer was concerned that we would not participate in the cost of this road construction. City staff also stated that the revised plan met minimum standards. We hope that the City of Sioux Falls, in this time of great growth, does not base development on minimum standards only. We are here tonight to ask that city council either deny or defer this plan as presented. I am here to state that we would like the major collector road to be located on the adjoining property line, as stated in city ordinances. We understand that a cost share for the road will be required between the two of us. As soon as the major collector is shown in the correct location along the property line between the adjacent landowners, we are ready to discuss with the developer funding our portion of that road. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, last call on that. All right. You want to come up and speak? Yeah, go ahead.
Brady Hyde, I'm the applicant, 41 Ellis LLC and Empire Homes. So I just wanted to touch on a few comments that they'd made. We're not trying to be rigid neighbors or anything along those lines. As far as reaching out and contacting them, their land is owned in LLC, as we're all somewhat familiar with. LLCs don't have phone numbers that one can look up or obtain. But with that said, when we do our annexation, are all of our applications, whether it be annexation, whether it be the mailers for the rezone preliminary plan, et cetera, all of our applications have my phone number and our, and my email address right on those applications. So as I had mentioned, from November of 20, I believe, that information has been with city council and on the website accompanying, I believe, on the, on the city's website, accompanying some of the applications, whether it be annexation, preliminary plans, rezoning, et cetera. So by, by no means are we, were we trying not to contact neighbors, but our information has been there in public's view to be contacted as well. And additionally, as mentioned, we are designing to city design standards. We construct homes to city design standards, and that's really, I guess, all that we feel that we achieve to do, I guess, is design, develop and design and construct to city standards. So, and we feel that we're accomplishing that with this. It was noted that, you know, unburdened some costs of the road. The reason the road oftentimes this occurs is when roads go into one property owner's or the other is so that both parties can achieve, you know, sales on both sides of the road. So it's only, it's only burdensome is if you, you're only able to achieve revenue on one side of a road, but you have to construct both sides. So in this instance, we're constructing, constructing both sides of the road and achieving revenue on both sides of the road, just as, as the folks to the west would be able to. So I, I don't feel like there's any big burden here. And then as far as the utilities are concerned, all the utilities for that portion of that 26 acres in the northeast corner of their property, from my understanding and my research, they would access the sewer and the water, which is available right on the north side of Ronzik, and they also have sewer, I'm not sure on water, in another road that is adjacent to their property on the north side of 41st and Lana. So that, as far as utilities are concerned, they could have developed prior to our development. We're not really, we're not limiting, in my view, their ability to develop. So they have the same ability to develop tomorrow as we do, as, as they would if, if we were or weren't developing. And then as far as common practice, this is not uncommon to do these roads such as this. If you, if you were to pan out on the Google map on Ronzik, as you go to the north on Ronzik, it doesn't carry through on the quarter-mile line. And that was, that was Rick's development. So it's not uncommon for quarter, for, for collector streets to deviate from quarter-mile, quarter-mile lines. So, and again, I could give you handfuls of instances where this has occurred across town. You've likely been on those roads, but probably didn't even realize it. So, yeah, that's, any questions for me?
Potentially. We'll call you up, Brady, if there's questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any, anybody else here to speak on this?
Mayor Ten Haggen, members of the council, Damian Grebel, Erhart Griffin and Associates are here to represent the Klein Properties on this project. Again, if we want to talk about the alignment of the road, we can, we can definitely do that. The road may not be constructed north of here, but it is definitely shown on that alignment. There is, as we know, this used to be the location of Highway 100. So there are definitely many things that happened for this portion of the roadway that we'd probably just go ahead and move, move beyond and be noted that the road is, as we get to 22nd Street, even in 26th Street, the road is back on the half-mile line or back on the quarter line, per city standards. City ordinance also states that half-mile roads, it's covered for half lots, development agreements, and half-road developments. And we are here to say that we will fully endorse the city ordinances as written, that this road should be located on the adjoining, adjoining property line between two property owners so they can share in that cost. Again, as, as stated, the first road on the ordinance, or the annexation, showed no road going to the south of 41st Street. The second proposal was a road entirely on the client property that was unacceptable to the clients. We did not, we dispose, dispose, we did dispute that because they did not want the full burden, burden of the road. What they want is half the road so they can have full access along that collector as any property should have for any type of development that they could have. They have market. They have market rate developers. They have been contacted. And this is what they propose. Per city ordinances, a major collector located on the half-mile line between two proper, adjoining property owners. There is a sewer. There are sanitary sewers in both locations. Obviously, if you, Mr. Johnson is here, he can attest to that. Sanitary sewer should be extended to upstream property owners as they're developed. So if you are the first to develop and you have an upstream property owner, you have to provide sanitary sewer to that person. This is the uphill portion of the property. This is where sanitary sewer is being proposed to this property. This is the downhill portion. If this development comes first, they should provide sanitary sewer to that side of the property. Yes, there is a sanitary sewer here, and there's a sanitary sewer there. As the property crowns or has different slopes, they all should be made available to the clients for their development. Again, in stating and wrapping this up, the clients are asking for a deferral so that this road can be shown on the quarter line between the adjacent owners, and they can participate in the cost of the road, or a denial that we reject this plan. The clients have stated they do not want to delay this property owner. He said, he stated he is starting on the east side of the property to begin his development. We're on the west side of his property. I do not see how a week deferral to get this road into correct location would cause any undue burden to the developer. Thank you for your time, and I would have any questions or answer any questions.
Possibly. Thank you, Damian.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this tonight? No one's going to pop up and surprise me now, right? All right. That's it. All right, counselors, let's move into any questions you may have for applicants, for Jason, staff. Go ahead, Counselor Knightzer.
Thank you. I've spent a lot of time on this, talking to both sides and the city staff. So I, I guess I'd be curious from probably Rick, since he's representing, I believe, the clients. So when you say participate?
Come on up, Rick.
Could, could you address, I, I mean, would, is the intent that there would be negotiation to fund half of the road the whole way? In?
On Ronzik?
Immediately, or?
It would be open if, is, you know, it's a question also I'd have to discuss with the clients. But if he wasn't going to develop that road or need it for, you know, two years, potentially, we could push it back a year. But we are willing to pay for our half of that road.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions tonight? All right, not hearing any questions. Let's get a motion on the floor. We can go into some discussion, then.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
Thank you. I would move to defer Item 22 till November 16.
Second.
Second, Brecky?
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Starr, seconded by Counselor Sale, to defer this item to the 16th. Let's go into discussion on that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, my thing, the biggest part of this for me is that to give them another week to work this out amongst themselves, rather than us making the decision. What always concerns me is when the plan changes between the Planning Commission and when it gets to us. And to do the minimal to make it work without going through the entire process. So rather than sending it back to the Planning Commission to come up with the finalized plan and get their recommendation first, I think a deferral and, and we could address this next week. Let the parties hammer out what they need to do. It sounds like they're not that far apart, and a week wouldn't slow that down.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the motion to defer, Counselors?
Can I deviate a little bit and ask a couple of questions to Jason?
Sure.
Okay. Jason, can I ask you a couple of questions? I'm not sure I want to delay or, I, I'm, I'm, this is a hard one. This is really different. It's very difficult that we're in a place like this. I know Counselor Knightzer, you've worked your tail off on information with this one, and thank you for that. We divide and conquer a lot of times. I mean, in general, here, I support this. I support the fact- I support the fact that we need housing, we need to work for this, but I'm also not, the problem that I have is, is if, if there's not going to be participation and we need the housing, and the applicant's willing to put the land, the, the road on his land so we can get that housing, I'm okay with that. However, now at the last minute, the, the neighboring is saying, well, wait, now we'll, we'll participate. And is that because the access to the road? I don't, I don't know, it's confusing. So, talk to me about the process of how often does this happen? How often do, do, do we deviate from that? Because if you think about it, a neighboring property could hold hostage to any development in this community, and that's dangerous when we need housing. We, we all say, oh, we're all for housing, but then we're not. So, talk to me about that process with that because I'm really confused, I'm a little bit frustrated, and I'm not sure what we should do.
Man, I'll probably honestly defer that to Shannon Austin, she deals with this a lot, and trust me, she's a lot better at speaking about it than I am, so.
Welcome Shannon.
Good evening Shannon.
Good evening, thanks Jason. Shannon Austin from Public Works Engineering. This, this is a tough one for us too. The preliminary plan meets the intent of the requirement to have access to forty-first street because it's shown the access at the quarter mile location. Professionally, I would love to see that road go down the property line to split those costs, but we understand that certain neighbors, neighbors might not be at the same place of developing. And so, we're in the same spot that you are. So, I don't know if I get, I give you a good direction, it's just, it's a hard decision.
Right, and how often does this happen that we don't put it down the property line? Because I know there's examples of it, I mean, it's, it's rare, but it happens, correct?
Yes, absolutely. But it, it's a, it's usually a joint decision, and we, we agree we don't like properties that aren't ready to develop to hold hostage of, of the other developer who is. So, we hope that they would come together to get a, you know, a conclusion of how they were going to do it, but it, it does happen.
Right, so, okay, thank you for that. So, here's where I stand based on some of those. I'll support a delay of a week, I don't want to delay it a week because that's one more week that you can't build if we're going to come to the same conclusion. However, if there cannot be an agreement between the two to, to be able to put this road in and share those costs, I'm sorry, it's a hard decision, but I'm going to support putting the housing in. We need housing in this community, and if we can start moving forward some of that development, great. But, you know, it's, this is, you can let your attorneys fight it out and say, who's going to pay for what and when and how long that's going to take, and it may or may not happen in a week, and if that's the case, then we all have another tough decision to make, to figure out if we move forward or not. It's, it's different than what we've dealt with in the past, but I, I don't want to set a precedent that we're letting neighboring properties hold hostage to, and I don't mean that, like, I should use a different term, so I apologize for that term. But I don't, I don't want to deter someone to, to build because we can't come up to an agreement, it's just the way it works. So, if we can't, then I guess we make a tough decision. So, I'll support the delay, not very willingly.
Councillor Kylie.
A question for Mr. Hyde, please. You're going to start the development from east to west. At what point do you feel that you'd be approaching the adjoining property?
It really depends on sales and whatnot. Our first, our first access is Brew that would come to the south. And then yes, we would move to the west, forty-third street would probably be first phase. You know, we'd come, we'd come from Brew, forty-first street, because that street then delivers us, we've got three different product types in this layout. And on forty-third street, on the south side of it, there's Parrot Homes there. So, we'd like to get into those sooner than later. So, for that first phase be Brew, and we would go forty-third street, probably close to the, if not, it would be very, very close to the property on the way.
Can you give me an estimate of a timeframe, please?
So, we'd put the utilities in, in March, and then we, we build the roads whenever we can get to it, so June, July.
Okay, and, and do you think that your development will be complete to the, the western edge in, in that timeframe?
On forty-third street. So, we would take forty-third street there. Would we, would we do all of, all of the western edge at that time? No, but as far as trying to identify, you know, we need, we either need this layout or an entirely different layout. So, it's not something where you can start, and then, you know, in the third inning, you decide that, hey, the game's changing, we're going to go a different direction. So, you know, once you start these, I mean, this, this little layout is three, four months of engineering in the works. And so, to undo this is no, no reasonably, no reasonable, I guess, it's not reasonable time or money. So, it's not just a quick, a quick adjustment. It's, it's something when you start your development, you need to know where you're going to land.
What would you need from the adjoining property owners to agree to put that collector street down the section line?
I mean, I don't want the layout down the section line. You know, they've shown you as far as here's what we want for our, our ideal layout. So, this is our layout. So, they like that layout, we like this layout. So, it's as much about that as anything. But when you enter into developer agreements, there's generally attorneys involved, and they're nuanced. So, it's, it's generally not a, a quick spin.
And, and one more question for you Brady. You say that this has actually been in the works since November of last year?
I think the annexation, I actually, I, I'm not a hundred percent certain. I took that from Rick stating that the annexation was in November of twenty-twenty. And so, that's what I'm sharing.
At, at what point did the adjoining property owners reach out to you and express concern?
Never.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just.
Go ahead.
Pointing to comment, I too do have some concerns over other developments holding another development hostage. And, you know, I, I will begrudgingly support the delay for one week as well too, but I would encourage you to work together and get this done because I agree with councillor Erickson that this community needs, needs housing. We need workforce, we don't get workforce without housing. So, get it worked out as much as you can in the next week.
Councillor Shelberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree, we're in a tough spot to be delaying housing that we do need. The questions I would have so far, maybe Jason can answer this for me first of all, on a couple. We just delayed this a week. If we're going to delay it again, what's been accomplished in the last seven days?
Really, nothing really. We've met with both of them, we're still at the impasse. After the first reading, then we had the applicant show this version that you see in front of you with the road going all on Brady's property. And that is what we've done for the last week and really can, or still at an impasse with both property owners.
So, we're not seeing like we're making headway and progress is being made, so another week should get us there? It's just kind of a well.
We haven't seen progress in the last, I mean, we met with both of them and, and really, they both have their reasons for wanting, you know, the clients want it on the property line, which we understand. Brady wants it, Ronzik to be all on his property, which we understand. So, we're kind of at that impasse from a staff perspective.
So, I believe a couple compliments, or some of the disagreement here has been the way the roads and the streets are laid out. The applicant says the way they're laid out is not uncommon. Is that your take on it?
That, I'm sorry, that it wasn't on, is uncommon?
Yeah, that it is not uncommon.
I would say, as, as Shannon indicated, it's happened before over the city. I would say it's more common to put it on the property line between the adjoining property owners, but we've done it several times, it's happened all over the city.
Okay, I believe communication was another thing that was brought up where it wasn't communicated between here and there, and the applicant has said their communication and contact info has been out there since this has started. Is that the way you understand it?
Yep, so we do send letters for the annexation to adjoining property owners, so they, the clients would have sent, we would have sent a letter to them on that. And then as you guys know, why we like to have the preliminary subdivision plan and rezoning to go together is a preliminary plan doesn't require a notification letter, but the rezoning does. So, they would have gotten a notification letter with the rezoning to, as, as part of this.
And the applicant is complying with all codes and standards to this point.
From our perspective, this does meet the minimum standards of the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I would probably go along with a deferment for one more week, but I, I would say I'm pretty much apt to go along with voting for this. Again, for a lot of the reasons that were already stated by a couple of councillors, I'm kind of along in the same lines, but thank you for answering the questions.
Councillor Nightzer.
Thank you. You know, this has been really difficult because I, I know both, I know both sides well, and, you know, they're both representing their positions. You know, one of the things it really hinges on, and I've talked to this with the attorneys, is the language that was brought up, which was that, that the collectors shall be developed along or between property lines so that both landowners can share in the cost as well as having access to the collector. So, it really comes down to how do you interpret that line? I will say that this alignment is, it's not unheard of, it's atypical. But collectors shall be developed along or between property lines, and so that the landowners can share and have access to the collector. So, way up at the north, the clients would have access for about a hundred and seventy feet, give or take. So, you, you could read that both ways. You could read it that the road has to go straight up and down, or that if they just do this, if Brady just does this, he's complied. It, it's debatable. To councillor Erickson's point, it's something I've struggled with is, i- if I read it in the way that it has to go up and down, you potentially may have issues where one developer's ready to go, the other parcel on the other side is not interested at all in annexation, let alone develop, development. Maybe there's not even sewer available. And up here in the northeast, they have twenty-six acres available of their hundred and, I don't remember what it was, hundred and eighty or so, that's sewerable. So, you could, i- in a certain reading of this, you could literally potentially put somebody in a position where they have to decide, am I going to develop? Am I going to just abandon it for now? Do I build just the forty feet, which is suboptimal? They could build half the road and leave the other half until the other person develops, and that creates issues. I'm not sure, talking to both, that they're going to come to a conclusion. I maybe could begrudgingly support a deferral. Now, that being said, couple, couple things. My understanding is as long as the access point doesn't move, this is a preliminary plan, so if it did get passed through, it could, they could change the alignment of this road, I think, potentially, and not have to come back to us in, in the planning. It, it, it's, it's very difficult. To Brady's point, if you do move that road, he's going to be having to change his, his layout and probably change the zoning as well. I mean, it's so. I, I guess we could maybe delay, but, but I think we do have to re, also just reflect on the fact that you're talking about two private parties, and we can't make them sit down at a table and come to some legal agreement as to who's going to pay what, and, you know, so, I, I think the devil's in the details. It sounds easy to just have them both build both sides, but you're talking about a several hundred thousand dollar expenditure. So, I, I guess I'll leave it at that. It's, it, there's no clear cut answer on this one.
Councillor Kylie.
Just very briefly, because it's, it's bothering me a little bit. It was, it was inferred that meeting minimum standards is somehow undesirable or not good. And I'd just like to state that we always have to have minimal standards. We could add additional aspects to this project and make them required, which now makes them minimal standard. So, when does that ever stop? Minimal standards ensures that this is going to be done in a productive, efficient and effective manner. And so, I just wanted to make that point. That meeting minimum standards is not good, rather, or it's not bad, rather, it's, it's good. So, thanks.
All right, councillor Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just recently councillor Jensen and I stood downstairs and looked at the picture of looking at the falls, and we both remarked on the immense responsibility we have as councillors to do it right. And I then brought up the fact that I was wrong on the Washington Pavilion years ago, and that's haunted me since. This might be a small, small part of what we're required to do as councillors to look to the future for twenty years, and that's why I'm going to support to go ahead and give it one more week. And if the resolution cannot be brought forward, we'll have to vote on what's in front of us then. But you, you might think that we're making a, a mountain out of a molehill at this point, but we do look long term. How is this going to affect Sioux Falls for the next twenty to thirty years? So, I would ask my council members to support the councillor Starr's motion to defer, and we'll take it up again next week.
Councillor Jensen.
Maybe I can finish it off, but I agree with councillor Kylie. The minimum standards are actually a really good thing that we have in the city, and they place a lot of burden on our developers, and I think both parties would agree with that the minimum standards do a really effective job of, of pushing this forward. The second point, although I'm not very supportive of another deferral of this, you know, one week is probably not going to make a, a huge difference in the development of this land. However, if there's not a resolution by next week, because it's locked up with attorneys, I will go ahead and support the plan that's in front of us. And then I don't know if an agreement can be, and not our city attorneys, but other attorneys. But if there, if there is a plan, an agreement to develop this immediately, that's what I'm focused on because we need the housing, we need it done right, and this is done right per the, per the minimum standards, which is a good thing, remember. And furthermore, it accomplishes that housing goal of, of our twenty-twenty-six plan. So, figure it out. If you can't figure it out, I'm, you know, inclined to move forward with the plan as, as presented, so thank you.
All right. See no other comments, I think we're ready to take a, a vote on the motion to defer a week to the sixteenth.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky? Yes. Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Shelberg?
Yes.
All right, motion to defer passes, we'll bring it up next week. Move on to the next item, please.
Item ten is a second reading deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Forty-first Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, RD two Town Home Residential Suburban District, and RA two Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, number one-five-one-zero-one, twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant, Empire Homes, Brady Hyde.
The applicant would request to defer this one also a week so it can go along with the preliminary plan.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this one before we vote to defer it? All right, I'd look for a motion to defer then to go along with the subdivision plan.
I make some motion.
All right.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, second by Jensen to defer this item to the November sixteen meeting. Any discussion there? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky? Yes. Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Shelberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, move on to item eleven.
Second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one fifty, building, subchapter vacant buildings, sponsors, councillor Sale and Erickson.
Good evening Matt.
Good evening council, Matt Tobias Planning Development Services. In front of you tonight, we have an ordinance to amend the vacant building registration. We're looking to change the fees a little bit. Long discussion on this one, so I'm going to turn it over to councillor Sale to take it from here. I'm here for questions.
Councillor Sale.
Thank you. Worked with planning and zoning and development on this, and they had it on their radar, and so did I. So, we're going to, the motion in front of us is to raise it from two hundred to a thousand, and historical districts to two thousand. I will be bringing forth an amendment in the discussion that will raise it a thousand dollars every year. You're still on the list. So, I have received overwhelming support from the community that this is the right thing to do to try and clean up some of our vacant properties. And I will say even to the fact that a lot of people thinks it's not enough. So, there are some pictures being shown here of a few of the properties that we're talking about. I think it's good for the community, I think it's good for Sioux Falls, and I would ask my fellow council members to give me their support.
All right, thank you councillor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
You know, we can go on and on with properties like this, especially my neighborhood. I can go on about thirty of them. Doesn't matter if you raise the prices or not. We have houses that are sitting here in the court system right now for about a year, year and a half. They're sitting there. If we use code enforcement and we use the laws of code enforcement. If we use code enforcement and we use the laws of code enforcement, we shouldn't have to raise this up. We should be able to go with code enforcement to judge, go through the process, and get these houses knocked down. So raising up the prices, I, I, if we're going to raise up the prices on this, we might as well raise the prices on everything else. Because when I walked in the Pettigrew, it looked like a freaking landfill until I started getting on the city about this stuff. This is not helping $200, $250, $1,000. How's that helping? We have laws with the city. If the city needs more laws, then here we go with Matt Tobias, Council City Council, and get more teeth into the law. This is what we need. I've been saying forever and a day. Again, we have a house in my neighborhood association right now that is sitting in a court case. So how is this going to help? It's been sitting there for quite some time. So what are we going to do with that? There's nothing we can do until it's finished with the court system and then it gets turned down. If we, as the city, keep using our resources, we can have these houses knocked down. I'm against this $1,000.
Come on up, young man.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel George Hamilton, All Saints Neighborhood Association. As it relates to some of the vacant houses that we have in the neighborhoods around town, the amount that's being recommended that be raised is not an overburdenous amount because the fact of the matter that if you have a piece of property here in Sioux Falls, a home, and you choose to, for whatever reason, let this home fall into disrepair and sit vacant, and choosing not to follow through with the current things that are on the books with the city as it relates to properties, you know, making sure the property is secure, making sure that the grass is cut, making sure that the snow is cleaned off the sidewalks and everything, when these properties sit vacant. Some of these properties that sit vacant, there's no snow removal during the winter, there's no yard cutting during the, uh, uh, spring, summer, and fall, um, no tree trimming, anything, no sidewalk repairs. So this is only a small step, as far as I'm concerned, and a reason why I feel that if it, if it, if it does pass, it's a good thing. If it, if it gets even more aggressive, it's a good thing. We need to be proactive because once we've identified a property, once we've spoken to the owner of the property and asked the owner to work with the city to address the needs in a timely manner, or be given time to make sure that things can be accomplished reasonably, and that at which time owners of the property just say, my property, I'm going to do what I want to do with it. There are laws and there are ordinances on the city, on the books, that are there to enforce this. So adding this here, monetary fine, uh, sometimes the only thing that gets people's attention for some things is their pocketbook, you know? If, if, if you enforce a fine, and however you choose to do it, and it's done even-handedly across the board, you get people's attention. Not something that somebody's going to think is mo- only being applied here or there, but being applied evenly across, because we, 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 we're working hard on the core neighborhoods of the city and the older neighborhoods to revitalize and bring them and make them, uh, family affordable, uh, walkability, you know, through the neighborhoods that, that, that allows the neighborhood to grow and prosper. And we've seen this happen in the hall, in the Pettigrew neighborhood, we've seen this happen in Cathedral, we've seen this happen in All Saints and in Hays, that these neighborhoods have really turned around and become a very proud part of the downtown area in Sioux Falls in general, you know, as we represent when you all come out for National Night Out. You know, the neighborhoods are trying to make sure that we police ourselves, but we need your help in making sure that enforcement is carried out, that we all raise this neighborhood together. So whatever it takes, I don't have a problem with Counselor Sale's, uh, proposal. I stand with it. As it relates to these properties right here, uh, these properties were in litigation, that has been resolved by the courts now, and it's going to go back for another round, uh, and we'll see what happens. But we need to hold homeowners simply accountable for their property and the maintenance and the way the property is kept. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, George. Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and I have an important question concerning these houses. And that is, what, what's the problem with the owners? Are, are they like out of town? Are they not awake? Or are they in jail? If you need to resolve a problem, which apparently we, we need with, with this particular problem, you need to go and figure out what the source of the problem is. And right now, we haven't talked about that. We know that they're problem houses, but we don't know why they're not being corrected. And I would encourage the people who are sponsoring this ordinance to research the problem a little bit more, so we know what the underlying problem is.
All right. Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
My name is Lanny Strickers. Counselors, I, uh, and Mayor, uh, I'm here to talk about code enforcement, which seems to be part of what we're doing here right now. I'd like to talk, first of all, about the house at Seventh and, and Duluth with the retaining wall that's been falling down for several years. It was repaired, and it's still falling down again. You've got a, a detour around it, uh, the sidewalk, so the children have to walk in the street to get, to get by on their way to school. The other one I want to talk about is-
This is specifically about vacant homes, Lanny.
Pardon me?
This is specifically about vacant homes. That isn't a vacant property. So do you, do you have vacant properties to discuss that apply to this?
No.
Okay. That's this, that's the topic of this ordinance here tonight.
Well, they were talking about codes, and, and this is what I'm talking about.
Talking about vacant, vacant properties. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Bob Trzynka. Uh, I live in the Cathedral area. Uh, I support, uh, the efforts of this council to try and do something about some of the abandoned homes in this, in this city. I mean, we heard a lot tonight about, uh, that we have a lot, that we have a need for housing, and all that abandoned homes are is underutilized housing that's already there. And so there has to, I believe, s- have some sort of way to encourage or incentivize these homeowners to utilize these properties in a productive manner. Uh, I think one of the ways to do that, as, uh, Counselor Sale and Counselor Erickson have put out, is to have a fine on, to, on those properties. Uh, I, as I was sitting here and I was listening to what was going on, I, I took a look through some of the other towns and, and cities around us to see what, what they were doing, um, to, to combat the issue of underutilized properties. Uh, and, uh, one thing that I thought was, uh, an interesting way to handle it is how Omaha handles it. Uh, Omaha's ordinance is at section 48 dash 149, has an initial registration fee of $500, but then every 90 days that the property is not utilized, the homeowner has to pay an additional $500. And so that gives a good incentive to the homeowner to then try and either, you know, do something with the property or sell the property. Because at the end of the day, all that, what we want to do and what we want to get out of these properties is, is that people can use them, and that people can live in them, and that they can be productive, and so that they don't become centers for, uh, unproductive or unbecoming activity. And I, so I think some sort of enhanced fine, similar to what we have in Omaha, would be a good way to do that in this town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up.
Mike Zerza, Sioux Falls. I mean, we, we want to do as much as we can to keep the Sioux Falls clean, but if we're going to raise the fine to $1,000, I got, I guess, like we do in business, what, how do you explain that dollar amount to the customer? I mean, what, what does the $1,000 do? Maybe perhaps explain how you come up with that $1,000 and what it's going to be used for, and what? I think that would be a, a good question to ask. Just explain to people what you want to use the $1,000 for. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this one tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Hi. Um, my name is Jennifer Johnson. I live in the Cathedral District, um, corner of Ninth and Prairie. We have some really enthusiastic homeowners in the Cathedral District that really want to get the Cathedral District to be the kind of place where young families want to move to, want to support their local elementary school, kind of a comprehensive look. The problem is, is that there are several layers of issues, um, and one of those is abandoned houses. Now, in, in the Cathedral District, you just can't tear those down. They have to be fixed up. And my concern is, is that the fee isn't high enough. $2,000, I mean, in a course of a year, it's just not that much money. And, you know, another thing is that, um, would be helpful, I think, would be to promote how, uh, more information to, um, the communities, especially particularly afflicted by abandoned houses, of what the city has to offer in terms of help for people that maybe can't afford to fix things up, or just more awareness of, of programs like that that are already out there, just a general communication, more communication, more awareness about those things. But, um, you know, as Bob was saying, and echoed by some others, that we are concerned that it's not enough money, that, um, it's not stinging enough, that it's, the turnover isn't happening enough. And, and, you know, Bob's good point is, we need to utilize houses that are already there, but just aren't good quality houses for people to live in. Um, you know, we're not, we need to utilize what we already have, and I think this is a good step towards that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Anyone else here to speak on item 11 here tonight? All right, Counsel. Questions for Matt or Counselor Sale? Let's get a motion on the floor, actually, then we'll move into that.
Move approval, or I'm sorry, I should let you do it.
Counselor Sale, you want a?
A second.
Second that?
Sorry.
All right. You got the second. Motion by Selberg, second by Sale. Counselor Selberg, you want to kick it off?
Yes, thank you. Quick question for Mr. Tobias. Um, when is the last time that we've moved fees at all on this? I think we've had some of these discussions. It's been a while, hasn't it?
It has been a while. I mean, if I go back, I think the $200 fee has been in place since, I mean, probably for like 15 years, at least.
Okay. And there's been talks about this for, I think, a couple of years in that, isn't there, as far as how we might go about it?
We've had cases that have came up, you know, and it's always, a certain case will come up, and we'll have that, we'll have the conversation about what can we do to prevent these cases from happening. So it's something we've been talking about for a while.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think my only comment would be just to thank Counselor Sale for his, uh, taking leadership of this, because it has been a discussion, I think, for the last couple of years, and I know he's done his due diligence, and I think been meeting with us and many people on this for, I think, went well into last summer on that. So, um, I think it's nice work that it's been brought. I think it'll do a lot of good in the community, and I think I along, as you said, I've, I've heard nothing but support for this out in the community, as far as I'm concerned. So, anyway, good job.
Counselor Sale.
I'd, I'd like to make my amendment at this point, so we can discuss that also.
All right.
The amendment would insert the following sentence at the end of paragraph A. Therefore, if any property remains vacant, the subsequent annual fee shall increase by $1,000 increments each year.
All right. A second for that?
Yes.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Kylie. Uh, on that amendment, discussion on that amendment. Counselor Kylie.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Sale, just for a point of clarification. You, you said it's going to go, uh, for single family, it would go from 200 up to 1,000? Is that correct? Could you repeat that?
Yes.
And then was it multi-housing, or was it commercial?
No. In historical districts, it goes to 2,000 for the first year.
Historic, but it's still on a single-family home?
Correct.
And that's, that's currently set at 200?
Correct.
I, you know, I would, I would have to agree. Uh, even prior to public input on this, I was questioning, would you be opposed of reducing that, uh, increment to less than a year? I know 90 days was thrown out. For instance, six months, 180 days, because a year to live next to that, and it's been over three years since this was brought to this council. Three years that people in the neighborhood have had to put up with this and other properties. I know I would not want that in my neighborhood. So I do think that we need to do something that helps resolve these issues. Maybe this is just a part of that answer, but I think it's a good start. So would, number one, would you be proposed to, let's say, uh, making this 180 days, we're going to have a change?
Thanks for your, that, Counselor Kylie, and, and actually, we, we, I discussed that with several people, including the city attorney's office, Danny Brown. Uh, I think my interpretation of all the input I've got was maybe you, we could take too big a step at this point, and it would not be in the best interest of the citizens to, to go too far, too fast. I would respectfully request that we take this step now, if it does not reach the, the intended use for us to get some of these off of there, that in a year from now, Counselor Kylie, we'll have you come back and be at the podium, and then you can, you can push that. But I would request at this point that we go only this step, which is a big step, and then we can revisit it at a future point.
Second question. Uh, increases $1,000 each year. Would you be opposed to wording, shall increase 1,000 the first year, or year one, or something to that effect, and then doubles or triples each successive year? I mean-
My response would be-
$1,000? Let's make this hurt. I mean, it goes from 1,000 to 3,000, from three to nine, from that, from nine to 27,000. I think they're going to want to ha- they'll have some incentive to tear this down, just-
Again, my response is going to be eerily similar to my last response, and I'll give you an example. There's a vacant house down the street from me. It's been tied up in an estate fight between brothers and sisters, and they cannot figure out what to do with that house. They do take good care of it. It is vacant house. To go too far, too fast, in my opinion, I would love to be able to enforce that, but I also want to be able to give somebody a break once in a while, that maybe there's a situation we're not aware of at that point. So if you make those amendments, I probably would support them, but I'm not going to make those amendments, do my amendment.
Well, and I realize, too, if we make an amendment to that extent, that we would maybe have to defer this yet another week, because it is a pretty substantial change from what you have already publicized. Uh, but, and I know that you've put a lot of effort into this and a lot of work, much more so than I have, so I will trust your judgment. But if, I would like to say that if I don't see improvements with these, um, I'll be bringing something forward for first reading the first Tuesday of May 2022, with a second reading of May, uh, the second Tuesday of May 2022, so we can get this resolved. That way I don't have to come up to the podium, I can speak from this seat.
Counsel Erickson.
Thank you. Um, quick question for you. Um, well, I think the intent is to get them fixed and not necessarily torn down, um, because they are in the historic area, and so we need to preserve those homes and the charm and the character in which they are in the area. So my question to you, and I, I own property that are not vacant, so they're taken care of, um, but former life, being a legislator, oftentimes, you know, we can put these fees on them, and they can sit out there, but if they don't have anything to collect, and there's no value there, what happens? What happens to, I mean, what happens to that fine? I mean, I can't squeeze blood out of a turnip, right? I mean, that's what my mom always said. And so what, what happens in that instance? Can we put it on the tax roll? I think we might need legislative approval to do that. So then if and when these are ever sold, the money can be given to the city and/or reinvested back into that property in the future. I think that's a good question of where does that $1,000 go?
Yeah.
And, I mean, a thousand bucks doesn't get you real far when you got to fix a house like this. This is going to cost you a, a large chunk of money.
Any, any, any of those fees that we get back, I mean, this is not, you know, we're, we're trying to solve a problem here, we're not trying to look for a money generator we're trying to solve a problem here, we're not trying to look for a money generator at all.
Right.
The fees that we get back go back to the general fund. In a case like this, if we had a house that was failing to register, register a home as a vacant building, we have to work really closely with our attorney's office and come up with the fee structure, what the fine will be. And then, once we get, once we, same process, once we issue our first, second, and third fine, then that tips it off to a court date.
Right.
So then, we'll have to get into court with some of these and try to figure out what the next step is, but I'm, I can sit here and tell you, though, that I'm hoping that with this, with the proposed fee increase, we'll start seeing the needle move on some of these.
Right.
You know, that, that's the intention here. And it is, no one wants this, no one wants this next to them, and that's the intention right now, and, and let us do our part to try to get out, and we do have housing, I'm glad, I'm not sure who said it, but we do have housing programs out there, we have rental rehab programs that are low-interest loans for, for homeowners to improve their property. We have single-family rehab programs out there, so we'll be doing our part as well, and when we're going through these neighborhoods and identifying these, trying to reach out and try to see what we can do to help this, because we don't, no one wants this. So, we'll be doing our part to see what we can do to help this.
Yeah, and I know you've worked really hard over the years that I've been here, and really taken a customer service approach, which is different than maybe what code enforcement has been over the years, and so I appreciate that and your service for this, but the intent is to make it hurt bad enough to, to get somebody to not have this look like this. If you buy properties, you have a duty to maintain and have them be normal in the neighborhood. I mean, just look regular, and so, you know, I, I stand with Kurt as far as, you know, this is the first step. Let's, let's, I mean, I understand what you're saying, counselor, and I would, I would be happy to support that effort come May, but I think this is the right step, and I think that it's been really looked at into, and, and to be honest, when, when Kurt and I talked about this the first time, I kind of got nervous, I thought, oh, gosh, what kind of, like, criticism are we going to get? Every single one of my emails was, it's not high enough, it's not high enough. I said, gosh, this was an easy one to sign on to, because you just didn't know what to expect sometimes, and so, I hope this can help, and I hope that those that do have vacant properties will reach out for the help they need, because it sounds like we've got some great neighbors here that are willing to make their neighborhoods beautiful and make sure that those are livable conditions, because we do have a housing shortage, so. Thank you for your leadership on this, Kurt, and I look forward to supporting it.
Counsel Kylie.
One last comment. I just want to make it abundantly clear that I'm very appreciative of Counselor Sale and Counselor Erickson's effort on this, to help move the needle, as you stated. My suggestions were not intended to come across as criticism of the amendment, but rather that I support it wholeheartedly, and I think it's just that maybe your patience is greater than mine, right, right now at this point in time, but I do, part of the reason for my statements was to deliver the message to the owners of these properties that this council is growing impatient, and that we do want to see the needle moved.
All right, any other discussion on the amendment here? Counselor Nitzer?
Real quick, I'm, I'm happy to see the graduated approach, looking around at other communities, that was very typical, and I, I did want to see a higher fee, but I also balanced that with the higher that we go, I would want to have some backstop, you know, that, that there's some nexus, because when you're talking about fees, you may have to have some sort of a legal nexus to say, that, to be able, the higher the fee goes, you're going to need to be able to show that, that it's not just an arbitrary figure. I mean, we could amend this to $50,000 a year, but, you know, that may not stand up in court, so I, I think you just have to be cognizant of that. You do want it to be enough to hurt, though, I mean, at the current rate, it's, you know, $16 a month, and even with 1,000, you're talking $80 a month, that's how much it costs to rent a storage unit, and I, I took that analogy from somebody that called me, so I'll give her credit for that, but, so, a little, and then having a higher fee for the historic district, I think, is really important, because obviously, they should, they should be granted special protection, and they are in many other ways, so I like what we're doing here, and let's watch and see what happens.
All right, other final discussion on the amendment here? All right, let's vote on the amendment, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes eight to zero, back to the main motion as amended. Discussion on that, Counsel Starr, and then Counsel Jensen.
Excuse me. Yes, I guess I still have a, a question about the, the fine itself and how we collect it, and if we have the ability on the back end, say, the mayor of Main Street buys the property or has the ability and wants to turn it back, do we have the ability to abate the fine and, and go backwards with it if that was there? Matt, you want to jump up, as long as you're going to? Then I'll blame the city attorney, and we'll get there next.
Yeah, I'm going to, so, can you repeat the question one more time?
Absolutely. My initial thought was, if we have, do we have the ability to waive the fine afterwards? Say, the property sells and someone wants to rehab the property, similar to kind of where I jumped on you a little bit on some of our mowing people that we went backwards on a little bit.
I'll, I'll, I'll say yes on that, and we do have that ability to work with the property owner and to, to do all those things, yes.
I just think that's with one of Counselor Kylie's comments, is that make, it's not high enough. I think if we have the ability to maybe go backwards on the, somebody who is ready to rehab and, and take some of those costs, that's my biggest fear, is that, that we find a property like this and we attach it to the property when it sells, that we make it cost prohibitive to just be bare land if that's what it eventually becomes versus rehabbing, and we're all very concerned about housing and not adding costs if we don't have to, so, making it a combination. So, is that the way we collect this, is when the property's sold, then, it's attached, the fines then attached to the, the property, or will this fine be more civil?
If the fine, if, if the property owner is failing to register the property, those fines will be collected through, like, not, not through assessment, I mean, tho, those will be collected through a collection agency if they don't pay those fines.
So, but it won't be placing a lien on the property?
Not, not as far as...
Or we don't have the ability to?
Not as far as what the fines that are associated with the property.
Which then makes it tougher to go backwards if we choose to incentivize someone to do the right thing if it gets old?
It does, but I think what we can do in that case is if, if we get to that point in time where, we'll, we'll use these, we'll use the fines as kind of a bargaining tool. I mean, don't, I mean, don't get me wrong, we'll be using that into our favor, like, hey, you may have to register this property, and this is what it's going to cost, so the, I'm going to sit here and stand before, before you and say that, I hope we never have to issue a fine, right? And that's, that's kind of what, what our goal will be, so we'll use that to our benefit. If it does get to that point in time where we have to issue, you know, a couple of different fines for not registering that, that's when we'll be working really closely with the attorney's office and going through collections to get those fines.
I, I'm back to the, and not necessarily for you, Matt, but more of a comment that, that it isn't enough, because some of the people that are sitting on some of those are in historic areas and let it deteriorate enough that they can't be, and we've had that conversation in the last year, that we've, there are owners that are intentionally letting them go that far, so the historic board reverses some of those things, so, another two or 3,000 on some commercial property along major thoroughfares in Sioux Falls isn't going to be a deterrent. This is going to hit smaller people and, like most fines, you know, a speeding ticket for someone for, one person, $150 is a large fine, another person, it's cost to do in business, and, and you move on, and so, I, the attempt to do something here, I think, this is one part of many steps that I think we need to, to move forward to continue to clean this up, and I agree with one of the earlier speakers tonight that says we, you know, we need to put more teeth into what we're doing, and I think I've said that to you multiple times, so, over the years, and I've never done it, but Counselor Sale and Counselor Erickson have, so thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward tonight.
Counsel Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to commend Counselor Sale again and Erickson for actually bringing something forward. A lot of people talk about doing things, and then they never end up doing it. These people actually started to do something in a productive way. Is it the best? No. Is it going to be improved on over time? Absolutely. We're going to be hearing back from, you know, our department, and we're going to continue to look at this, like Counselor Kylie said, and I can't wait to support it if these individuals who own these properties or these businesses who own these properties don't start acting up. I'll be right there to second, you're in Counsel Sale's increase to this fee, so, take notice. It's going to be around, and I'm going to be here for a little while, so, I'll make sure to carry the water if you're not, Counsel Kylie.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's take a vote on the main motion and as amended.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero, move to item 12.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2021 International Building Code and Amendments thereto. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021, sponsor mayor.
Busiest man in Sioux Falls right now.
Yeah, I wouldn't go that far.
Butch, good evening.
Butch Warrington, chief building official, council mayor. Every three years, we bring a new set of codes to us. This is the International Building Code. There's not a lot of changes, but there are a few. I have met with the Building Board of Appeals to get their approval and recommendation on this. I work very closely in hand with Fire Marshal Dean Lanier on a few items. One of those items is eliminating the sprinkler in an open parking garage. There's a project that's going to be coming into town, and they informed me that's going to save them approximately a million dollars, so it is a big item. We met with Denise Hanslick with South Dakota Multi-Housing on an item for the low frequency. The product is not available right now, so we've amended that out. There's three different types of construction coming in, so it's exciting there. One of the other big changes is probably the accessibility code, that's going to change. Things are going to get a little bit bigger for things, but it's all because of the scooters that are being used now, so I'm available for any questions if you'd like.
All right, thank you, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Butch on item 12? Counsel Erickson?
Thank you, Butch. Quick question for you. Any feedback or concerns from the HBA or chamber?
No, not on this one at all, no.
Okay, no feedback really at all?
Yeah, I did meet with the Home Builders Association, I was going to bring that up when it comes to the International Residential Code, because they do a little more work with that.
Gotcha, nothing from the chamber, though?
No, I did not, did not meet with the chamber.
No, and I, and I don't necessarily expect you to meet with them, I just was curious if they paid attention to this particular item and proactively reached out, because I know they have gobs of members that serve in all sorts of capacity in the chamber, so I was just curious about that. Okay, I'll have a question on the next one, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Butch on this one? I look for a motion that set a date of second reading for next week, Tuesday, November 16.
So move Jensen. Second Kylie?
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie, any discussion? Let's vote on that one, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, next item.
Item 13 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2021 International Existing Building Code and Amendments thereto. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021, sponsor mayor.
This one is the International Existing Building Code. This is really a code that's designed for existing buildings to give them a little leeway. It does make a difference. I can tell you, my inspectors don't like it, because things don't have to be brought up to current code, but it is there for a purpose. It is very sprinkler-heavy, if you do that, it does help things out. There weren't a lot of changes this code cycle. The big changes were all on I-2s, which would be hospitals. They brought them up, so they're a little more strict, but that's okay for a hospital.
All right, thank you, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 13 tonight? Counsel, any questions for Butch here? All right, look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16?
Move approval? Second, Nitzer?
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Nitzer, any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson? Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, next item.
Item 14 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2021 International Mechanical Code and the 2021 International Fuel-Gas Code and Amendments thereto. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021, sponsor mayor.
This is brought up for the International Mechanical Code and the Fuel-Gas Code, they work together. One is for more natural gas, and the other one is for all the mechanical equipment that goes with it. There weren't a lot of changes, we did make one big change on the whole house, and we're going to make that a little simpler for all the builders out there, and make it easier for them to comply. This is kind of a contentious little item, that's been a thorn in our side for several years, but I think we finally are getting it, so it works out a little bit better. One of the other changes is on fire dampers. They found that fire dampers don't close real good when the equipment is still running, so now you're going to have a different type of fire damper in there, but overall, this is good. We did meet with the Mechanical Board of Appeals to get their approval on this and recommendation for adoption.
All right, thank you, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 14? Counsel, any questions on 14? For a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16?
So move Jensen.
Second, sorry.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale, any discussion there? Let's vote, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, next item.
Item 15, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2021 International Residential Code and Amendments thereto. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021, sponsor mayor.
This is the residential code that's being brought up. There were a few changes in this, one of them was a very good change, on two-family homes now, it's not going to be quite so restrictive on that party wall between the two units. That's going to be able to be reduced down from a two-hour wall down to a one-hour wall, and probably the bigger change is, it doesn't have to go out to the exterior wall anymore, it can stop at the interior of that exterior wall, so that's going to save our builders some construction costs on that. I did meet with the HBA on this one, and also the Building Board of Appeals. It's, there's a lot of good things in this one. We didn't change the energy requirements on this, we're going to leave it the same way it has been for the last year, but we did look at things, there were some changes, required a 10-mil thickness under the concrete slab, we did stay with the 6-mil, because we haven't had any problems, and we did make, keep all the amendments that we've had in the previous years also. And there, again, this has been brought to the board, HBA, so they did give us our recommendation for approval.
All right, thanks, Butch.[1708.05] All right, thanks, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on fifteen tonight? Counsel, you got any questions on fifteen?
I just have one.
Counsel Erickson, go ahead.
I know you talked about some of the things that you got rid of, which is saving money on some of the homes. Were there any other things on there that's going to cost an additional... Like a requirement in there that's going to cost additional funding, and if so, how much?
In all reality, there wasn't anything in there that got added to put up the cost on anything. So it was a real good code this time.
Good. That's music to my ears. I appreciate that. And I think that's important for us to note that we're not changing a huge function of what's required when we're building those homes. And so we're trying to make it as easy as possible to get safe, affordable homes for whatever your budget is, if it's entry-level or top-of-the-line.
Yes, I think you're exactly right. We do go through the code quite extensively. Neil King, who is back here, is the Building Inspection Manager, and I spent many hours going through this to see if we could find any things that we changed. And one of the other things we changed and we see is now you don't have to have a handrail if there's not required to be a guardrail on a deck or the landing at the top. You know, it's one of those things we saw. They would put it on when the house was there, but we'd drive by two months... Two weeks later, and it was gone. So it was one of those things. We can save a little money that way.
Exactly, and save some room in the landfill, because that's probably where it's going, or a fire pit. So thank you for your efforts on this. I appreciate that. I'll move to approve.
Can I have a second there?
Second, Jensen.
Second by Jensen. That's the set of date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16. Any discussion? Counsel...
Just real quick, I just want to commend Butch on his work with the home builders. They really have high praise for the work that they do together. So, hey, keep it going and keep, you know, keeping Sioux Falls in a safe building world. So thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, let's take a vote on this one, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yep.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021. Sponsor Mayor.
This is a new code. Before, we had a lot of amendments and ordinances in our residential code and the building code. We've taken all them out. Now we've adopted this code. It's amazing how close we were all those years to what this code says. We've left it pretty much intact as it is. The only big difference we did, we took out the requirement that allows a safety cover on a swimming pool. We just didn't feel that was safe. We'd rather have the barrier up around the property or around the pool, so.
All right, thanks, Butch. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item sixteen tonight? Counsel, questions for Butch on this one? Counselor Selberg?
Hey, Butch, what finally spurred the change to this?
It was time. It wasn't available years ago. Last year was the first year that it was available, and we didn't adopt it then, so we could kind of look things over. So we thought it was time to now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions here?
And move to approve.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16 for this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item seventeen, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2021 International Fire Code and amendments thereto. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021. Sponsor Mayor.
Good evening, Dean.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Dean Lanier, Fire Marshal at Sioux Falls Fire Rescue, here to present the International Fire Code and Amendments Two. I will briefly go through some slides and get us to the end in a hurry. This code does mimic the building code in that we are bringing in the audible alarms in residential occupancies. However, the scope will be limited to hotels and motels. It does not include any code changes for apartment buildings, so that has been amended out. Mobile food vendors, an interesting note, this was up for adoption during a 2018 code cycle. We actually amended it out at that time. At this time, we've done our homework, talked to the mobile food vendors in town, and are ready to adopt this standard for all of them. It will really only include additional safety checks by local gas vendors. There will be no change to permitting or licensing within this code change. Additive manufacturing, or what's also known as 3D printing, is a new section of code. It actually makes a distinction in the fire code with regards to... It does not include any standards that would apply to residential applications or school applications. The concern is, is just providing some safety standards to larger-scale industrial 3D printing. Oddly enough, it does happen in the city of Sioux Falls, and I can tell you right up front that the issues that principally are identified in these code standards are... Have already been adopted as industry standards, and we're kind of just finally following behind with getting this into code. I think it'll be a very positive thing, because there's a clear distinction made, and then the industrial users of those type of 3D printing processes already know what the basic standards are. In this code, there's additional requirements for closed dryer exhaust ducts. Oddly enough, there are a lot of fires that occur from closed dryer ducts. It's kind of... We're catching up with things in the code with this. It was referred to in other sections of code previously, but now it's clearly in its section by itself and is providing some clear standards for maintaining those dryer duct systems to try to limit the number of fires we have from that cause. Indoor play structures, previously, the fire code did not have any standards in it regarding these indoor play structures. You'll see them around all over town. It wasn't clear exactly what the requirements were. So within this code cycle, there is... There are standards and code requirements for installing these. They have to meet a minimum size before the fire code kicks in, but this provides some good language to ensure that that's done in a safe and respectful way. Compressed natural gas vehicle refueling, the standard now is being applied to private property and specifically residential homes and any use of compressed natural gas as a vehicle fueling. Previously, there weren't standards about the equipment and accessories that you need to be able to use compressed natural gas. This catches us up on that. So it basically requires if someone has a business that uses natural gas for vehicle refueling, they use authorized accessories for that purpose, not just go to a local hardware store and piece something together and use that instead. High piled storage of lithium batteries, this is something that's gotten a lot of people's attention over the last few years. They are a special safety hazard when they are stored en masse in any building. The code has done pretty much a 180 in regards to making sure that these get covered a different way. They pose a higher threat risk, and they can present a situation in which basically a whole building can be taken down from a large storage of these lithium-ion batteries. So the code is trying to address that concern with these provisions. Finally, fire safety at construction sites. This is something that we intend to provide a lot of education to our construction industry about what they can do to limit the size and scope of incidents in a unfinished wood-frame-structured building. If you've looked at the news within the past couple of years, you've probably seen several incidents in which large wooden apartment structures have just basically burned down. I can tell you from a fire marshal perspective, we don't have a whole lot of answers for wood construction that doesn't have walls up, isn't quite complete with floors. It is a danger that is a serious concern for us. So therefore, we're going to do our best efforts in making sure that folks are educated about how do you protect it when it's not finished? And it doesn't have wall systems or windows and doors in it. So that'll be an effort on our part to make sure that we educate people well about that standard, and we limit the size and scope of any incidents concerning that. Any questions for me?
All right, thanks, Dean.
Yes, sir.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak on item seventeen here? Can I hold up?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Denise Hanslick with South Dakota Multi-Housing Association. Just want to give a huge thank you to the city. We met with Dean, Butch, Matt, Kevin, and a couple of others, and we greatly appreciate being brought to the table to discuss these code changes prior to coming in front of you. So that's all. It was just a thank you, and we support both of their code changes.
Great. Thanks, Denise. Anyone else to speak on item seventeen here tonight? All right, Counselors, you got any questions for Dean on this one? Counselor Starr?
Yes, Marshal. My biggest concern is sometimes that we do the right thing within the city limits of Sioux Falls. Are we getting... Are we pushing people who want to... I don't want to use the word skirt, but maybe looking for a less expensive way of doing things. Do we push them out of the city, and is that really even a valid concern? Because we need to do the right thing for our community, but if I choose to do this 30 miles down the road because I can't do it inside the city limits, have we really gained what we're trying to do in the life safety part of it?
So one of the things, oddly enough, the fire marshals for the state of South Dakota meet on a monthly basis. We talk about these issues with regards to different standards. We've made a lot of efforts to try to standardize what we adopt and talk through what we adopt with all the other jurisdictions that have fire marshals within the state, including the State Fire Marshal's Office. I can tell you that the State Fire Marshal's Office will be looking towards adopting these codes in the not-too-distant future, so that we'll all basically be on the same version and have very similar code requirements. It is a concern for all of us, because we're all basically dealing with trying to accomplish the same objective. But there is a lot of cross-talk between all the jurisdictions within the state of South Dakota about what we're using, what's the impact, what we hope to achieve. So there's often a lot of similar mindsets towards that within the fire marshal group. But there is a large effort to make sure that we're consistent.
Perfect, thank you. That was the exact answer I was looking for, so I appreciate that. Because they... Not all, but there are some that say balance the cost of building and doing, you know, and doing that and doing the right thing and making sure that it's not too far, but far enough. And the talk together and working together, I guess, was exactly what I was looking for as part of your answer, so thank you.
All right, any other questions for Dean? All right, I'd look for a motion on this one, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16.
So move. Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that motion, Counsel? Hearing none, let's vote, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item eighteen, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the issuance of its wastewater system revenue bond in one or more series to the South Dakota Conservancy District, authorizing the use of proceeds thereof for capital improvements, pledging the wastewater system revenue of the city to the payment of said wastewater system revenue bond, fixing the terms of such wastewater system revenue bond, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement between the city and South Dakota Conservancy District, and authorizing the execution and delivery of such wastewater system revenue bond to the South Dakota Conservancy District not to exceed $123 million. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021. Sponsor Mayor.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having us tonight. This is first reading on a critical step so we can fund the expansion of the wastewater plant by 50%. The goal is to break ground right after the first year. We're at 90% drawings. Last time we were in front of you regarding this item was on October 18th. That action allowed us to make application for funding through the state's Low Interest Revolving Loan Fund. We testified in front of the Board of Water and Natural Resources on November 4th last week. They unanimously approved the application. Tonight, we have Doug Hayek, our Bond Counsel. Doug is here tonight. He's not able to make it next week, so if you have any Bond Counsel questions, we would like to get those addressed tonight. Also have Shannon Austin and Ryan Johnson here as well. So just a couple of slides. It's always good when people don't know where the wastewater plant is, and so it's flagged on that map in the northeast corner of the city. This is loan three. So the funding proposal was to delay Pump Station 240 by two years, slide those loan funds into... To address the cost escalation, commodity escalation. And then we're hopeful we'll be able to backstop that with ARPA funds. We've had good discussions with the state to this point. And then ultimately give you a... Get another update on schedule. We're at 90% drawings. We'd like to begin construction in early 2022. This action, first and second reading, would allow us to actually go out and bid out the project and get things underway. With that, we're here to address any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public here to speak on item eighteen tonight? Counsel, any questions for Mark or our Bond Counsel tonight? Counselor Nightzer, go ahead.
I think it might be one and a half percent, but do we know the interest rate on these? Or does it float depending on a bond market?
No, it is said it's a 20-year term, 2% interest.
Any other questions for Mark here?
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr?
Yeah, Director Cotter, the construction part, I know the design is very complicated, and you've done a great job of going through that process and peer reviewing and the things in that part of it. Is the construction complex with the type of people who would bid on this project? Is it open to a wide group, or is it a small group of people? Like building a bridge, there are specialized builders for that part of it. For this facility, does it require... Or will we see local contractors being part of that process?
Yeah, we've heavily encouraged them to reach out to the local market. Interstates has already been secured. They're corporates out of Sioux Center, Iowa, but they've got over 100 employees in Sioux Falls. Jim Sokup's actually out there already grading the trades laydown area. So the nice thing about Construction Manager at Risk, we can actually go through all the different schedules of work, see how they're getting packaged. If some are too big, we, as the owner, can say, "Let's go smaller so we can actually incentivize more local." We want... We've got great capacity in our local contractors. But in general, it is a very complex type of work. It's not just general commercial construction. We're also trying to keep a wastewater plant running while we expand it, which is going to add a lot of complexity. There's a lot of shutdowns in the middle of the night. So it does limit who does this kind of work. I think the other concern we have is just what the, you know, extensive ARPA funds that are going to hit the market, the sooner we can get this bid out, it's in our best interest. Because after the state legislature likely appropriates a significant amount of ARPA funds, the market's going to get filled up quickly, so we would appreciate the support tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions here for Mark? All right, I'd look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16.
So move, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Sale on that. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Counsel member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item nineteen, the first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations, highways and streets, $3.3 million. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021. Sponsor Mayor.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. This is a good news story for us. It's been obviously a very robust development year. We set the budget for 2021 for arterial street plating fees at $2.54 million. We've collected to date $5.53471 million, and we've still got, you know, a good amount of two months left. And so we would ask for your support in putting to work those about $3.3 million so we can use them to fund more arterial street investments. We bulleted out a number of items. We've got two traffic signals that have met warrants, 74th Street and Louise Avenue. That's a critical intersection that has finally met warrants. 69th Street and Ralph Rogers with the Avera Campus and a number of other developments in that area. That's met warrants also, has caused a few accidents of recent, so we've got to get a controlled situation out there. We've made really good progress with Arrowhead Parkway on the east side of town. That's turned into a significant project. It continues to grow. It's probably got a close cost... It's probably got a close cost estimate of almost a $20 million investment. We're very close to going to the market for that. And then Tallgrass Improvement, just a standard arterial street where we're taking a gravel road to pave. We've got, those lands out there are sewed. Ultimately, once we complete the environmental assessment documents and design for the 85th Street and I-29 interchange, this will be a complement to that area. So, with that, it's a good news story. We'd ask for your support.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone here to speak on item 19? Counselors, you got any questions for Mark on 19?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen, to send this to a second reading on Tuesday, November 16. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 20 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending Chapter 57, Garbage and Recycling of the Code of Ordinances of the City pertaining to the Collection Regulations. Recommendation, set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November 16, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Josh Peterson with Public Works Environmental Office. Thank you for having me here. We're here to present some proposer visions, the Chapter 57 of city ordinance. Been in front of you here not too long ago during informational meeting, which was a great opportunity to have a discussion on this. It's been a really thoughtful and deliberate process. We started this in earnest this midsummer and been working on it, gathering information, and now I think we're ready to come to you with a proposal that I think is meeting all the needs based on the comments we've got from multiple stakeholders. So, this is, I just pulled up the one-page informational that was put in with the agenda today. I just kind of panned through and talked a little bit in detail on some of the items that we've got on there. With this proposal, we've reorganized Chapter 57 into about three different areas. We had services required, the containers themselves, and container placement. We had three goals kind of through this reorganization. One of it was to consolidate the ordinance, make it a little easier to read. It kind of grown a little bit over the years as different amendments were made. We wanted to make sure we were providing consistent language between all three waste streams, municipal garbage, the recycling, and the yard waste. And then also, one of the big drivers was adding the option for curb placement during collection. With this revision, we made sure that we were balancing input from a lot of different stakeholders through this process. In August, we did go to the citizens with a survey. We were fortunate enough to receive over 4,000 responses showing the interest that the public did have in this topic. You know, through that, we've seen that there really wasn't a knowledge of what that existed ordinance was. And so, that was maybe a little bit of a surprise to us. There was strong support for curbside allowance of curbside placement. And then, you know, through this process, I'm sure all of you have gotten it, just like I have, talking with friends and neighbors. I've gotten a lot of informal input on this as well. And followed very similarly with what I saw with the survey. To get the other side of this, of the issue, we met, city staff met one-on-one with a number of the haulers to get their input, to see what their challenges were, what their input was on this. We met with seven of these local businesses, and it was a great discussion to really figure out where their industry was today and how it had evolved over the years. Some of those haulers have been in business for 30-plus years and have really seen Sioux Falls grow and the industry change. Another place where we got input was the Solid Waste Planning Board. We took it in front of them in our September meeting, had a great discussion there. They ultimately did vote to approve that in September. That's a very, very interesting board. It's one of our largest advisory boards we have with the city. We've got 14 different members from a wide variety of backgrounds, three city employees, a couple from the garbage and recycling industry, representative from South Dakota Municipal Housing Association, business community representative, three citizen representatives, and then five representatives from each of our five counties in our service area. So, a lot of various perspectives that participated in that discussion. And then finally, we did solicit some input and some comments from the city council as well to hear your desires and your concerns with the process. So, to talk a little bit about one of the big changes with curbside collection. Through all of the, the majority of the comments we've heard from all of our stakeholders was they want, they would like to see curbside allowed, but not mandated. And that is how it's written into their proposed changes. To go into some detail, some of the haulers were indicated that they were going to continue to provide the valet service that they do today at the business model they have. Others were very interested in looking for those efficiencies that could be, may be obtained from curbside placement. And they said they would ask their customers to take their containers to the curb on collection day. With this allowance, but not mandated, what we're looking for is customer choice, to where they can choose the hauler that best fits their needs. They can shop for the service they like provided, and they can also look for the price they're willing to pay for those services. With this change, we also wanted to make sure it was done in a safe manner. So, we did provide some guidance also on where, what we meant by curbside placement. We wanted to make sure that the cans were not in the street causing traffic safety issues. We wanted to make sure they were not on the sidewalk to cause pedestrian or ADA issues. And we wanted to make sure that when they're placed out there, they're placed in a manner that's not creating a hazard, obstructing view of traffic. So, that is in the ordinance as well. We also put some guidance in there for the duration that would be allowable to take your containers out for curbside. We looked at noon the day before your pickup, no earlier than that, and 11:00 PM the day of collection to return your containers to their storage space. This was really trying to balance the needs of keeping that window as tight as possible to minimize the time that the containers are out there. But we also recognized there's a lot of varying work schedules within the city, a lot of nighttime, second, third shift. And we wanted to make sure we provided some flexibility for people to work around their work schedules as well and be able to take their containers out and bring them back. One thing we did do is maintain the language directing container placement on non-collection days. We continued with the, the containers should be stored. If they're stored outside, they should be kept directly adjacent to the structure in an inconspicuous place. We had a lot of discussion internally of, was there better language out there than inconspicuous? And we came to the same conclusion as the original drafters that, you know, it does fit the intention that we're looking for. So, with that, as we look at an inconspicuous place, I did provide some examples that we have seen within the city. Inconspicuous, as we've talked with our attorney's office, that has a different definition depending on who you talk to. And what it really boils down to is it's more of a guidance term than it really is a regulatory term. And so, it's difficult to talk about inconspicuous and have a code enforcement issue. What is enforceable is the requirement that it shall be kept directly adjacent to the structure. And that's why you see in the fourth picture there, that's clearly unacceptable because it's not anywhere close to the structure. To kind of wrap up my part of the presentation, you know, I said, I've really appreciated this process. It's been a very deliberative process. We've used to draft this. Got a lot of input from various stakeholders, a lot of stakeholders that have a vested interest in this. Because of those variety of perspectives, I believe we've developed a good sustainable program to carry our garbage service into the future. You know, as I said, I'm new to my role in environmental. I've been with the city for 15 years, but just within the last five to six months in my role, so I'm new to this position. And it's been a great learning experience for me. I hope all of you have had a chance to learn some of this as well. Because of my newness to this, I'm going to have Mark come up and give a few comments because he's had a lot more experience working with the landfill and the haulers and be able to provide a little more perspective. And then also, I just want to get him as part of the discussion because I'm going to be out of town next week and miss the second reading, so I want to make sure he's part of the discussion as well. I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Josh.
I hope you caught that. That was a very nice way of saying that I've got a lot more gray hair than Josh does, especially in solid waste. Thank you again for the space tonight. Also with us is Donnie Kiper. He leads the landfill team. Greg Engler, he spent extensive time. He's with city attorney's office. We've got some members of the solid waste planning board here and a number of licensed garbage haulers that, if afforded, they'd be here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. Just a couple of points. The proposal for allowing curbside, not mandating it, really does match the feedback and give us a balance of the feedback that we've received from residents, haulers, and solid waste planning board. We feel like it matches the behavior that we're seeing throughout the community. Even prior to the pandemic, you've seen this occur. In most cases, you know, residents like their hauler. They, in many cases, want to help their hauler. And so, you've just seen, you know, a progression of cans being pulled down toward the end of the driveway. It's also very common in other cities. So, with us importing so many new residents each year, people had those habits where they lived and they came here, and ultimately, they just continued them. Habits are hard to break. At one point, Greg Engler, we hired him. He had a longstanding in the military, but had 14 different assignments in 26 years, and all 14 of those assignments had mandatory curbside. We're saying, "Let's allow curbside. Let's just not mandate it." One of the things that we would really try to do when we offer you any proposal is we want to make sure we write an ordinance that the majority of people are going to follow and be in compliance with the ordinance. We know it's, people get their news, they get their information a lot of different places. But one of the points that came out of the survey is most people didn't even, most residents that responded to that survey didn't even know we had an ordinance that spoke, and in some cases, it was different, for yard waste, recycling cans as opposed to garbage. One of the things we wanted to get accomplished through this rewrite is to make things very consistent. So, I think we've accomplished that, but we've also recognized the direction. And with the extensive growth that we're seeing in Sioux Falls, what's a good practice to actually move the needle and move this forward? One of the things that Holly Meyer would say is that Sioux Falls is the leader in sustainability. The sooner, the quicker we can actually get a can picked up at the end of a driveway gives us an immediate air quality benefit. So, we want you to at least consider the sustainability impact. We have a truck parked there for 40 seconds as opposed to maybe two minutes. That idle time is an immediate benefit if we can reduce it to air quality. It's an important utility. We believe that this piece of our ordinance needs to evolve. It's a hard job. It takes very skilled CDL drivers to accomplish it. We feel like this draft, collectively, we spent a lot of time on it, Josh had mentioned that, really takes a step forward, kind of gives us that three degrees of change to actually move this element of this important utility forward. If we're able to, first, you know, we've got some key people here in the industry that like to speak in support of the proposed draft. But in light of also second reading next week, I've had a conversation with Counselor Nightzer. He's got a proposal for mandating valet. If we can get that out on the docket tonight, so we can at least have contemplative thought over the course of the next week, I think that would be helpful so we can actually make a good thoughtful decision next week. So, with that, I'm here to answer questions or we can open it up for more perspective.
All right, thanks, Mark. All right, let's go to public input. Anyone here to speak on this topic tonight? Please come forward. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. And ditto to what the pastor said. You guys are doing a great job in leading us into the future, so.
Thank you.
I am here to disagree with this proposal. I love.
What's your name, sir?
Randy Schlegel.
All right, Randy.
I moved to Sioux Falls three years ago. I lived up in Sioux Falls until 1995, moved up towards the cities, and now recently moved back. When I got here, I was just shocked. Felt like I went back 20 years. Garbage guy is coming to pick up your garbage cans. I was shocked. Minneapolis, they have the levers picking up the garbage cans driving down the street. They're going about seven stops to one. They do it here in Sioux Falls. But I loved it. At first, I'm shocked. My price went up double. You know, I'm paying twice as much. But the cleanness of this city is, after, you know, I got used to this, is just shocking. Every other city you drive to, I don't care what this rule is here that you will have the garbage can out to the street within three hours of the, it's not going to happen. They're on the street seven days a week. Somebody's having their garbage picked up on Thursday, and they're going on vacation. They put the garbage cans out. They sit there until Sunday when they come back. That's the facts. I mean, you know, you can disagree, but that's, this is my opinion now. You know, you guys can all disagree, whatever. So, I'm just saying I like Sioux Falls. That is clean. Now, given the choice, you know, that's better than mandating it. But the one thing that bothered me from that comment that was just made, you know, we're leading. Sioux Falls is leading. You guys are leaders. But I've heard this comment multiple times. I'm shocked that people don't realize we have a mandate that you put these garbage cans by the house. That means we're doing a poor job of leading. How come the garbage can guys, they're doing a tough job, but they're the ones that should be leading this? If somebody's putting their garbage cans out by the street, they tell the person, "You have to put it by the house." They don't go, "Well, thank you. That's very nice of you to help me out." Now, when I moved here, again, I'm used to putting it out by the street. I wanted to do that at first too, but I learned. So, why aren't we just teaching people to do it the right way rather than going backwards and saying, "Okay, let's see. They're not doing it anyway, so let's try to just tell them to do whatever they feel best at." And anyway, the other part I wanted to ask about this thing is what I'm seeing now is that some people are putting it out by the street. The garbage haulers are picking that up and rolling it back up by their doors. You know, so it's kind of a both-way deal. Is the new policy that the garbage can, that will be taking it and putting it back by your garage door? Or are they going to just leave it by the street? So, that's all I got.
Thanks, Randy. Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak on this tonight?
Sierra Resources, Sioux Falls. And yes, we come from bigger cities, so everybody puts their trash on the road. But here's the issue, and I want someone from the back to come clean with it. We have people that may not, can put their trash outside to the curb because they might have a disability. There's another, or is the trash company gonna charge people to go and pick up their trash by their house versus the sidewalk? Or versus by the end? Because we cannot charge people for that because if we do do that, then we're penalizing people. So a lot of people that can't get out there and, uh, put out their trash all the way to the curb. You know, I'm looking around in the back of me and not trying to point people out, but we got a person in a wheelchair. Is that person in that wheelchair, could he grab a, a, a garbage can and put it all the way out to his curb, uh, to his driveway? And if he doesn't put it out to his driveway, will he be, uh, have to pay extra for that trash service? So we gotta be confident about that when we, we wanna do this. I just say, leave it alone and just have people go up to the driveway and pick it up. Because people, uh, yes, you can, no, you can't do it. It's either one way or no way. And when we mandate to where people gotta put it to the driveway, then we are, uh, refringing on people's disabilities here also. So I think it just needs to be kept as, yes. And like council says, if it's not broken, why should we fix it? What was broken about, um, being pushed back by the houses? What was broken about that? Was anything broken? I didn't hear nothing. In my neighborhood, I'm in a hardcore neighborhood in a poor area, and y'all wanna talk about garbage? I haven't heard nothing in my neighborhood, and I walk those streets and knock on doors and 3,900 people in my neighborhood. Nobody had issues about the garbage. So why don't we just leave the garbage where it's at? We have to be confident of people that have disabilities here, people that are in wheelchairs. Maybe some people, um, cannot walk very well. Some elderly people cannot get out of the house very well to put out their garbage. That's all I gotta say.
Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Jesse DeWitt, AOK Sanitary Service. Again, I wanna echo everyone else's thoughts. How amazing you guys are at considering every angle, uh, from every topic that comes up here and the patience that you guys have. You guys are to be commended. Um, to address some of the concerns, again, she talked about, uh, mandating the curbside, which is, this is not mandating the curbside. This is basically giving the garbage haulers here in Sioux Falls the opportunity to, to model their business practices the way they see fit to better serve the customers that we have here, uh, whether it be keeping the prices low, staffing problems. Right now, my greatest commodity is my employee, and it is getting harder and harder to come by. Last Friday, I stayed at work. We don't typically work on Friday. I stayed there all day for 12 interviews. Zero showed up. And I mean, that is, in the, in the climate we're working with right now, it's tough. Like they said, like Mark said, this is a tough job. Uh, you deal with elements every day. Finding the right guy to do this is rough. Every two, three hires I have, one might stay. I mean, it's getting tougher all the time, which is why we talk about going to curbside as an option. Not saying that, uh, every business is gonna do it the same. I have my business model in mind. But if I have 17 employees and I can make each one of them do 50 more stops, I mean, I'm looking at 850 more stops a day. That's if every, if every employee can only do 250 to 300 stops, that's two employees, three employees I don't need to have that I don't have to try to find and replace. So basically, for, for my business practices, it really comes down to being able to service the amount of stops that I have with the employees that I have and not having, I mean, they, they retire, they move on, they, they move out of state. Finding that replacement has become rough. Financially wise, like she's saying, if we don't go to a curbside and we can shave those, those, uh, costs off, it's going to just add up into the cost. So if you're talking just strictly cost, what it's gonna cost to haul your trash, valet service versus curbside service, either you're gonna pay more for the valet service or you're gonna save because it's curbside. I mean, it's just up to you guys to make the decision what you feel is best for the citizens of Sioux Falls, whether it be the savings or, you know, the curbs out on the curb for, or the cans out on the curb for the 12 hours or the 16 hours that was proposed. Any questions?
All right. Thanks, Jesse. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tim Deppe with Novak Sanitary Services. We understand this is a hard thing to do. It's change. This whole city is progressive. It's in a change mode. How many large businesses do you have coming to town that's taking away people that we employ at the rates that we're charging currently? We've had multiple increases to keep our staff this year alone and looking for others going forward. I looked on Indeed, 4,200 openings, just posted on Indeed for jobs that's needed here. You're at what? Just over 2% unemployment? 511 of those 4,200 are CDL employees. That's what we all need. CDL employees to come and do this work. I've been in this work business since 1991. It's not a glamorous one. I've got gray hair over it. I've had to run up and down. But I ask you, are you willing to go out for the wages we pay to go 30 flights of stairs every day and 15 miles a day walking up to the, the house and pull the can out? I'm asking you that. That's what you're asking us or wanting to talk about mandating us to continue to do. Okay? The other things we really understand, and it's, it's a business that's evolving, okay? We talked about the last time when we talked about this is you wanna hold rates close to being the same. I can guarantee you, if we have to pay employees more, the prices are going up. If you wanna keep everything savings and cost savings possibly, it's operating efficiencies. We're all in business. If we can do more things with less people, it's a cost savings, okay? I know my cohorts out here will pass that along, just like I am. The concerns of the last person that was up here is you're worried about, you know, people that can't get it up. The elderly, senior citizens, the curb, we can do valet. We will always offer the valet service. But we have to realize, this growth, how many things did you just table of the homes that you're wanting to build? How do we keep up? 13 haulers, three trucks on a street doing, one for trash, one for recycling, and one for yard waste. Okay? That's an economic thing you gotta look at and environmental. How do we keep that up? We're having a hard time, and I know my cohorts are having a hard time too. You need to really look at this on the economic side. Don't be the one that's sitting here going, we wanna do this and now we can't pick up the trash. What's gonna happen then? Because we don't have the people to do it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Jesse Cody with Waste Management. I'm not gonna add too much more to what they did. Couple of things that's important to me in my business is the safety of our people and our environment. You know, to, to talk efficiencies and cost, keep in mind that the valet service puts 30 to 40% more emissions in the air. It's significant. Um, a, a garbage truck gets about three and a half miles a gallon. So it's, it's a lot of diesel. The other part is the safety of our people walking up and down the driveways. Mostly in the, in the winter when we deal with slippery surfaces or snow-covered, um, driveways. We, we've had broken bones. We've had concussions and things like that. Significant costs, um, on the insurance fronts and liabilities. And one thing the public needs to realize is they're liable for those injuries. So if, if one of our men is, or women are walking up a driveway and was to slip on their driveway and get a $250,000 injury, does the public realize that they're responsible for that injury? So that's, um, it's a very real thing. I know. We had four injuries last year just in residential driveways. So, but that's about all I wanted to add. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jesse. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? No, you, you had your chance, sir. No, no rebuttals. Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Travis Harnison. 814 West 20th. I'm opposed to this item. On many levels. I hope I meet your time limit. First, because of the whole, whole COVID help issue. I totally get that. It's hard to hire my own help. But I have to find a way to accommodate. Raising my prices isn't one of the ways. You also, you also call this optional. I ca- I look at it as optional with a carrot. Even meaning the most sincere garbage hauler. Who don't charge this price. Eventually, they will. Because of the carrot hanging in front of them. Everyone else makes this amount. Why am I busting my butt and not making this amount? You're all about hiding the garbage cans. The own ma- in your own math. If you put it out at noon. The day before. And if you take it back at 11:00 the night of service. That's 39 hours. And. Sorry, 35. I don't know how many calls I've got. Of delayed service. So that makes it 59 hours. Of my garbage can being out on the curb.
Travis, I'll, I'll give you another minute here, all right?
For the whole public to see. That don't make much sense. I also own rental properties. I currently love my tenants. But some tenants. I'm happy they know how to change a light bulb. Let alone put a garbage can out. That would be, so that would be one expense out of my pocket. And then it was already brought up. But the elderly. They have a fixed income. And they have trouble moving. I wouldn't wanna burden them any more than they already are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Travis. Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right. See, no more public input. Um, let's move in any questions that might exist. Councilor Knightzert, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess as a continuation of the, I guess I'll give a little bit of my presentation. I, uh, have the intention to, uh, move to amend this ordinance at second reading. And, uh, as a matter of, of just being transparent with, uh, the administration, Public Works, City Council, and to gather citizen input and not to have any issues with whether it's substantial or not. I had it published at first reading here. Uh, I don't intend to move that tonight, but I did wanna at least throw it out there so we could talk about it. Uh, essentially, as was mentioned, it would, uh, preserve the current standard of what they would call, uh, valet service. It would make the garbage hauler responsible to go get the can from the structure, bring it back, bring it down and bring it back up, essentially as we have, have today. This has been something I've really been, really been thinking about quite a bit. There's great arguments on both sides. Well, I, I had a really good discussion with, with Director Cotter. And, and trust me, there's really good, um, good arguments. I, I see both sides on this. But I, I guess really what it comes down to, and I can talk more about this at second reading, is, the current standard has been working for many years. Um, I, I don't think, I don't think it's broken. I, I get that we've had, you know, the COVID, there's, there's struggling with staffing and, and, and cost escalations and inflation. But, you know, that, that's structural throughout the economy. There's a lot of reasons that that's happening, not the least of which is, um, you know, some fiscal policy at the national level and, and decisions. But i- in any event, um, it's not unique to, to just the garbage industry. When you have a model where you don't have, and I'm certainly not for this, where you have, uh, you don't have any municipal service, you don't have a monopoly, you have many haulers collecting, uh, and we don't even require that there's one day a week in a particular neighborhood. You literally will have haulers going in and out of the same neighborhood virtually every single day of the week. And so I, I think when you have a model like that, you really need to, uh, think about what that then means, which, which I think it means, um, and, and you can see this, is that there's going to be cans out every day of the week. And we take pride in having, uh, a clean, beautiful city. As far, as far as the, so many hours before and so many days after, the problem with that is that it's gonna be almost impossible to enforce. And the reason for that, and whether that's city staff or if I'm just walking down the street, if I'm walking down the street and I see a can in a, in a neighbor's driveway, I then have to know what collection day of the week it is for that hauler in that neighborhood. How do you have any idea without doing some research, you know, whether or not, like, in my case, mine is picked up on Thursday by a certain hauler? How would you know that? To know that whether it's out too long or not? That's not going to be something that's enforceable. The cans are just gonna be out there and you're gonna have, um, cans down at the street, uh, virtually every day of the week. The free market argument does have an appeal, but I, I mean, honestly, this is not a pure free market. This is a regulated industry. We, we make them meet certain standards and do certain things and meet, uh, you know, certain, uh, recycling standards and, and many other things. This is not a pure free market anyway. So this is a community standard. And I think the people that are gonna be probably hurt the most by this change are gonna be the elderly and disabled. And I'm hearing from a lot of them. Um, and so that's, that's really pulling on me. You know, if, if we did have, and I'm not for it, but if we had one hauler, if it was, or if it was a municipal service or one day a week, maybe it would be different. But I just think that we have something special. Yes, it's an anomaly, but that doesn't mean it's bad. I think that makes our community special, and I, I just don't wanna throw it away. So for that reason, I'm going to bring this amendment and, um, we'll see where it goes. And there's other arguments, and I get it, there's risk. Um, I, I would argue that the risk doesn't go away. It's simply transferred. If you, uh, require the homeowner to bring it down, well, then, you know, they, they obviously are, are taking the risk. So, um, yeah, good arguments on both sides, but I, I really. So, yeah, good arguments on both sides, but I, I really think it's not broken. Let's not give it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for the city staff here? Sure you get a motion on the floor if there's no question. Do you have a question?
I have a question for staff. The current ordinance does not allow for curbside pickup. Is that correct?
I think if we can spend just a couple minutes, the current ordinance is inconsistent, so. That's the other thing that changed with my hair. Alright, so I just, so just, so we can speak to how that's currently worded. Just give me a minute.
While Mark's digging that up, Counselor Erickson, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I had a comment, not a question. So I'll, I'll just speak a little bit before Mark goes. I'm going to talk out of both sides of my mouth here a little bit because I don't know where I stand on this item yet. We have a small little place on Lake Compeska up in Watertown. It is municipal service and it's curbside required. I love it. It's awesome. I get one bill for my electricity, my water, my sewer, all of that. Now, that was in place when I moved there. I might have a different opinion if all of a sudden the rug was pulled from under me. I live with it. I just do. I, I, I love it. It's great. This is another hard decision because is it really broken? I don't know that it is. But I do appreciate the permissive language to say, let, let them innovate, let them invest in the technology. When I say they, the haulers. I can choose which hauler I want to go to. If I want curbside or this, that, I can choose that. It's, it's my choice. I will tell you, when we went through the COVID process, I was furious when I saw an extra ten dollar charge on mine because I was out of town and I had it sitting outside and it wasn't by the curb. They didn't pick it up and I got charged ten bucks. So I got charged an extra ten dollars and they didn't pick up my garbage. So that was super frustrating to me, so I switched companies. I did. I went, I switched all my properties and I'm with one person because that was my choice. It's what I want to do. I own rental property. I'm not going to make my tenants bring it out every single week. It's, my business model is different than traditional rentals and it's a lot to ask for them. They don't bring it out. But that same hauler that I enjoyed the relationship with gets them, comes around, my tenants bring them out back. It's, it's, the sky isn't falling and we've got to be innovative and let technology kind of catch up with the way we've done things. But I see the other side. The other thing that we need to consider, I'm going to put my work hat on for just a minute, is, you know, the CDL changes are coming in February to have a CDL license. So we're going to add an extra burden to anybody that wants to be a CDL. One, if you want to go across state lines, you have to be twenty-one. But if you want to be a CDL driver and stay in the city, starting in February, the wonderful federal government is telling us that you have to go to school to get your CDL license. You know who teaches those? Those tech schools. You know it costs fifty-one hundred to fifty-five hundred dollars a, a year for them to get their license? So now Waste Management is trying to hire two, three people, another fifteen thousand dollars out of your pocket and you hope that guy show, or girl, shows up for work. You just said three people didn't show up for work. One did. That burden and that expense being passed on to these, these businesses is huge. Who pays for it? I do. You do. Everyone does because they've got to make it up in the end. So while I understand and I recognize that, I also struggle. I'm not worried about the garbage cans being at the end of the curb. I think that generally speaking, people are quick to pull them back. If garbage is blowing all over the place, maybe you need to up your service and get a bigger can. I know there's times where mine blows out because it's overflowing. Shame on me, but it happens. So, and you can't put a little hook on it. I, I get it. I know I'm just processing and speaking, but this is what I'm working through and trying to process because I don't know the answer right now. Now, if you told me we had to bring it to the curb, I would say no. Do I think that's maybe coming in the future? Maybe. I don't, I don't know. I don't think I'll be here. Rick, Kylie, I, I say this every time we talk about garbage. We started seven and a half years ago. First issue that we voted on was garbage cans. We're almost done and we get to vote on garbage cans one more time before we're done with this council, which is nuts to me. Because who knew that garbage cans would be so emotional? It is. It's a service that, that people enjoy. And I don't, I mean, I know I just said a lot of mumble jumble that maybe didn't make sense, but we've got to recognize how industry is changing. We've got to use innovation and we've got to let people have choice. But I don't know where I'm at yet. So there's my two cents.
Can I answer that question that Counselor Sale asked?
I do. Thank you for the extra time. Just reading over the red line. So there's three different areas in the red line version that you can take a look at in the, in the week that we have. The first one reads, and I just want to point out the in, the inconsistencies in three different areas. That was one of the things we really wanted to clean up. But I want you to know it's silent in all three areas whose responsibility it is to actually bring the can from the curbside back to the structure. So the first one is, it's, it relates to garbage and recycling containers. Now that's been redlined out to just say containers. But it used to say the garbage and recycling containers shall be kept in an inconspicuous place beside or behind the structure, which is reasonably accessible to the licensed commercial hauler, period. Okay? Now, if you go into the residential, single-stream recycling, collection and containers, this reads, in the city recyclable materials not otherwise managed and self-hauled by the resident shall be deposited in a proper, single-stream recycling container and placed at a location other than curbside as directed by your licensed hauler contracted to remove the same. So again, at that point, it could be, your hauler today could ask you to put your single-stream recycling side of your structure, front of your structure, or at the end of your driveway. It just says other than curbside. Again, there's, and then it's, obviously it's silent on whose responsibility it is to bring back. We're trying to clean all that up. And then last, very similar language is in yard waste. If collected by a garbage hauler, yard waste shall be placed at a location other than curbside designated for collection by your garbage hauler contracted to remove the same. I think our, the one thing we first recognized, the inconsistencies, it's already hard to, when you have an open system, you said it very well, Counselor Knights. You have an open system, you know, we, we broached the idea on, on capping licenses. We heard, we heard it pretty loud and clear that this council is not ready to move forward with that. We asked the question in the survey, would you like to have a date certain of when your garbage and recycling was collected in your neighborhood? It was split and we think a lot of that is split because we went back and tried to do some investigation on that because I thought that was going to be an immediate seventy-five percent yes because we just heard someone today that they live on an alley and there's almost twenty hall, twenty different trucks will go down that alley in any given week to service ten properties with the different services. But number of people, both, both parents or both people in the house actually work. So whether it was date certain, they're not seeing those haulers on a daily basis. I can tell you from Public Works, we're seeing, you know, just, there's obviously fair wear and tear to the roads. But we also consulted with the haulers and at this point in time, that's not a good proposal to take forward either. So we wanted to just focus on what's the most efficient way we can collect. We still wanted to have the ability for a property owner to make an agreement with their hauler if they want valet service. But if they also want curbside and if there becomes a price offset for that, that's clearly between you and your hauler, you'll qualify for that. We just didn't want to take forward, with all due respect, a mandate on valet and/or curbside. And we would ask for some good contemplated thought through this week so we can make a good decision next week.
Counselor Sale?
Thank you. I just want to follow up a little bit with that. You talk about it being somewhat ambiguous in there. In my readings of that section, when it does not specify for yard waste or for recycles, I refer back to the place where it is specified to define what it means other than curbside, which says in an inconspicuous place close to that. That is the place it is defined in the whole broad garbage article where it should be. I've always interpreted that way and I'm surprised frankly that the garbage industry did not interpret it that way. And I was frankly surprised when it came in front of the council a year ago when that they needed a break. We needed to put it to curbside. They didn't have enough help. We certainly understood at that time. But when I heard today that it's thirty, forty percent more cost to go and pick it up with valet, I'm thinking, how do they know that if they have not, if they've been following the ordinance which says the garbage should be by the house? So as we go forward to discuss this and Counselor Knights are just coming forward next week with an amendment, and I think to before, it's not ambiguous to me what it means other than curbside. It's defined in another section of that. So now I have another, I have one other question for some of the garbage haulers. We talked about a commercial driver's license and Counselor Erickson referred to it. Are we talking a class A license, a class B license? What specified?
Tim, you want to come up here?
So a class, they have to have a class A with air brake endorsements.
A class A?
Or they can have V, but yeah, they have to have air brake endorsements to be able to drive a trash truck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question and then I'll just get a quick statement probably. Director Cotter, how many surveys again were sent out where we got four thousand back?
We got, we did it online and we got four thousand back.
Do we have, have any idea how many people got the survey? I mean, how many went out, requests to fill out the survey and we ended up getting four thousand? Is my, any idea?
With it being electronic, people have to actually go and initiate the survey and then fill it out if that's what.
So no idea.
Wasn't like a paper survey that we sent out to five thousand residents. We got, you know, seven percent sample back with it being online.
Okay, so it wasn't an email sent out to fifty thousand people either?
No, we, we looked for those avenues. We engaged with the hauling community and said, you know, we're putting this out on, on our website, we're putting it on our social media sites. And we also asked them to send it out to their customers.
Okay.
And so the result of what we got back was four thousand respondents.
Okay. And I bring that up because I've had some other people bring up, well, what's this survey and why didn't I get it or how did that work? So I wanted to kind of bring that up over here. Thank you. I, I think my only comment on this is it's, you know, has, I think it's been said already. It's, when you thought about this early on, and I think Josh put this well, this has been a long thoughtful process. It's gone on for months. And you'd think with this, it's kind of a black and white issue and boy, I wish it was. Those are my favorite. But boy, this is just like an onion. You keep peeling another layer and it's this and that. You think you have an answer and then somebody comes to you with a different point and you go, well, that's a good point. My first inclination on this is to, as has been said before by some other counselors, why are we fixing what wasn't necessarily broken before COVID? I don't remember hearing a word about this before COVID. I, I also know that the survey says that people are craving curbside where I can tell you pretty much ninety-nine point nine percent of the personal correspondence that I've received are completely against curbside and giving you every kind of hardship why that does not work for them. So you're kind of going back and forth. But things always do evolve. There is always room for improvement. I think it's been said that a number of cities our size all do it, do not do it the way that we do it right now. Their system is different, so things do evolve. Is this model sustainable? I'm not quite sure. Will rates go up if we keep it the same? That's a question. Again, good questions where I'm coming at going, well, I think we should kind of keep it this way. And on that way, I've tried to listen to all views and Director Cotter and I had a very nice conversation today too, obviously whose opinion I respect on this. And anyway, so I'm kind of, again, I'm a little bit caught in the middle. It's been, it's hard to believe we're this many months into this and we're still kind of, I think a bunch of us are kind of caught in the middle here. So I'm glad we've got another week to talk it out. But I appreciate everybody's points of views and I certainly appreciate the folks in this industry. I won't tell who my provider is given an endorsement here, but I always remember the story. I had had to move about six years ago and I had a pile out in front of my house moving. And my provider said, oh, we'll take care of it. And I looked at my wife and said, well, no way. And they cleaned up every last bit of that and I, it must have been, I don't know how many truckloads. And they didn't have to and they didn't charge me an extra dime. And that gave me, number one, they had a client for life and number two, a respect for people in this industry that had stuck with me. So anyway, it's, again, I'm probably babbling a bit too, but we're trying to find our way here and what's the answer? And I wish it was as simple as you think it would be, but I'm glad we've got another week to talk about it. So, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to state that Counselor Erickson is correct. She started this position seven and a half years ago talking trash and seven and a half years later she still is. I'm, I'm pretty sure that I remained silent on the topic seven and a half years ago, so this is my first time. Personally, I'm not opposed to curbside service, but I'm an able-bodied individual that's capable of taking the container down and bringing it back presently. That could change for many factors and it could change for any one of us for, for many different, different reasons. So I am cognizant of that. But boy, it is difficult because there are two sides to every issue and this one is not unique in that way. That there are definitely going to be cost savings to the haulers because it's going to create efficiencies. It's going to increase safety on the job for your, your personnel. It's going to reduce your personnel costs, which hopefully would help keep the bills to the customers down. But on the flip side, there are the individuals that cannot transport the containers down and back. And presently, there's not necessarily an assurance that that valet service that's available today may not eventually go away. Even, it's, it's optional, but I would agree with the comment that at what point, I mean, it's currently up to the hauler to make that decision. What do they want to have kind of a smorgasbord of options available to their customers? They could elect to just go curbside and then the customer would have to find another hauler. And, you know, what happens if we don't have enough haulers that are willing to provide that valet service that, that exists today? That's, that's one of my concerns as well as I've, I've stated publicly if, you know, I'm not opposed to curbside, especially if some of the savings due to realize from the efficiencies of the operation would be passed on, on to the customer. You know, so what assurance do I have that that would happen? What assurance do I have that those that do elect to provide, continue to provide valet services that their costs are not going to increase from what they presently are? So again, I'm, I'm truly not opposed to curbside pickup because I do see, as Director Cotter mentioned, a benefit to the environment too. So I think, I think this is, it's, it's good to have this discussion. I, I do, I will be honest, currently I'm leaning towards supporting Counselor Knights' amendment. I'm not going to say definitely, but leaning that direction because I think it brings some clarity to some of the confusion that currently exists that Counselor Sale had brought out. And quite frankly, I'm a little disappointed that there is some confusion as to whose responsibility it is to bring it back because prior to us putting a temporary hold on the inability to take the container down to the street, I don't think it was an issue. The, the hauler went up and, or went, went up to get it, dumped it and then took it back. So I am somewhat confused at that as, and why it's not consistent across the industry. I had expressed the concern that it's not a level playing field for all of the haulers as it's being, as the practices are conducted here today. So that would bring some clarity. So that would bring some clarity to that aspect of it. But this is, you can see both sides of the issue, and it's not, it's, you, you think that it's a very simple decision to make, it, it is not. But I guess I'm just looking for some more assurances that I've, that I've requested. How do you give me those? I don't know if I have the answer to how you can give me that, that assurance, but hey, I'm open, and I'm all ears at this point. So thank you for the opportunity to address this.
All right. Let's get a motion on the floor to send this to a second reading for Tuesday, November sixteen. So move, sale.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by sale, seconded by Kylie. Got any final words here? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item twenty-three.
Item twenty-one.
Twenty-three?
Okay.
Am I right? We skipped twenty-two, we moved by amendment?
Item twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, item twenty-one.
A first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one sixty zoning subchapter definitions. The planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Sponsors, Councilmembers Kylie and Erickson.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you very much, Mayor. During the recent discussion on medical marijuana, I mentioned it was my intention to bring forward an amendment relating to sensitive uses, and that's what we're doing here this evening. The ordinance before you would amend the definition of sensitive use by removing places of worship from the definition when it exists within a commercially zoned area. This amendment ensures businesses which are limited by sensitive use restrictions are not adversely impacted by a place of worship that may choose to locate in a strip mall or retail building. The ordinance also includes updates recommended by planning. To go into this maybe a little more detail than that, Mr. Jason Bieber will address this further.
Yeah, as Councilmember Kylie indicated, really the main, main point of this ordinance is to take those places of worship, not have them be included as sensitive land uses for the ones that are, that are typically going into some of our commercial and industrial zoning districts. In the bottom left-hand corner, there's an example of one that's, that's out by the mall that's choose, or chose to go into a retail strip mall along with some other retail businesses. Right now at that point, any kind of a, they would be classified as a sensitive land use, not only for medical cannabis, as, as Councilmember Kylie talked about, but also for on-sale alcohol and, and different uses, which we know by the mall, we have several on-sale alcohol uses and full-service restaurants out there. So that's really the gist of it, to move those, out of those commercial areas, not to consider them sensitive land uses, but still protect the churches like in the upper right-hand corner, these are churches that would be located in residential zoning districts, in residential neighborhoods, that would utilize the NF-1 form, those would still be protected, those would still be sensitive land uses, as we would classify them and other residential uses. And then really the other main thing is, we have public use facilities, we don't take, we don't actually have a definition for that in the zoning ordinance, so instead of, we're looking to take that out and really define those, what are public uses, and those are libraries, community centers, and public recreation facilities. And that would be areas, if we had indoor gyms, or if we had golf, indoor golf things that the city owns, so that would be the other proposal as part of this, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for the sponsors or Mr. Bieber on this?
Move, move to approve.
All right, motion a second to send this to a second reading on Tuesday, November sixteen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero now, twenty-three, Denise.
A resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, annexation zero one five one two seven, twenty twenty-one, Riggs addition, sponsor Mayor.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Jeffrey Schmidt representing Planning and Development Services on these three items. This one is in the northeast part of town, it's being requested by Nielsen Construction. It's sixty-seven acres, they're requesting to bring this in for a hundred and forty single-family residential lots.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on twenty-three? Counsel, you got any questions for Jeff on this annexation?
Move approval.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item twenty-four is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, annexation zero one five two zero one, twenty twenty-one, Strunk addition, sponsor Mayor.
This annexation is internal to the previous one, this is owned by the city of Sioux Falls, and it's going to be owned by the city of Sioux Falls Public Works Engineering, it's going to be a drainage detention pond facility to handle not only this residential, but the upper northeast area for future detention. It's eleven acres.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this one? Any questions here, Counsel?
Move approval. Nitzer? Second, Kylie.
Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Kylie on that. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item twenty-five is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, annexation zero one five zero one zero, twenty twenty-one, Miledi addition, sponsor Mayor.
This is being requested by the property owner, Harz, it's on the west side of town, it's along Lo Mesa, six point five acres, it's in the Sioux Falls School District, it's going to be used for future residential development.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on item twenty-five? Counsel, questions for Jeff here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve twenty-five. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, and item twenty-six.
A resolution approving the release of the water main easement located in lot B-one Sandy Creek addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, sponsor Mayor.
All right, good evening again, Mark Cotter with the Office of Public Works. Thank you for having us, Counsel. This is a very simple item, this is, this is an existing platted easement that goes through the future Veterans Community Home Project land. There are no, this was platted back in nineteen ninety-six, there are no public facilities in this space, and it really will pave the way for the design to continue. That gives you a sense of where it's at on the plat, and then there's a sketch of the future Veterans Home Project, so we would ask for your support in that release.
All right, thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public here to speak to this item? Counsel, any questions for Mark here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Counselor Kylie?
No questions, but just want to say I wholeheartedly support this measure, it's for a good cause.
All right, any final discussion on this one? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item twenty-seven, notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
And next item?
Item twenty-eight, report of the Sioux Falls Districting Commission, plan to adjust council district boundaries.
Mark Millich, you've been waiting patiently tonight, thanks for sticking with us, man.
Happy to be here. I think the theme of the evening is growth.
It's growth, buddy.
And this is part of it.
That's right, and it's part of it.
So good evening, Mayor and City Council, I'm Mark Millich, Chair of the Sioux Falls Districting Commission, and I'm happy to submit the commission's districting plan pursuant to section six point oh-two of the city charter. Copy of the final report is available online, but I'll use the next few minutes to highlight some key points of the process and the submitted plan itself. The council appointed the commission nearly one year ago, with myself representing the Northwest District, Bob Timian the Southwest District, Joe Kipley Southeast, Barb Johnson Northeast, and Tom Hurlbert the Central District. We knew early in the process that the census data would not be available in the spring, so we used the first several meetings to develop options using population estimates based on housing units. As time progressed, the release date for the final census figures was pushed back at least twice, requiring a change to the timeline, which the council approved back in April. Then by mid-August, official census data was made available, allowing us to formalize districting options. As I mentioned, we were using housing data and had assumed the census data would be comparable. For the most part, it was, but the census figures were lower than anticipated. What this meant was that all the options we had developed before the data release were not usable. Nonetheless, we continued to develop options using the census data in August and in September, culminating in a public hearing on October twenty-eighth after a thirty-day comment period. Before I discuss the options and submitted plan, I'll review the guidance found in the The city charter lays out five separate criteria that were required to consider. First, all districts had to be equal in population. Now, the ideal population, an average of all five districts is thirty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-six residents. Given the remaining criteria, the charter does provide for a five percent deviation from the average population. This was one of the biggest guiding factors in development of the plan. Additionally, districts had to consist of contiguous territory, and precincts could not be divided. We use the precincts as currently defined in city ordinance. And lastly, the number of districts in more than one county were to be limited, and the length of the boundaries to be as short as possible. We use these criteria to guide us throughout the process, but also discussed other considerations, which I'll highlight in the next slide. This slide shows statistics for all of the options that we considered, includes population and deviations. First, I want to point out the existing districts as of today, those are at the very top. I mentioned earlier that Central District was much lower than anticipated, it was nearly seventeen percent below the average. And the Southeast District, on the other hand, and as expected, was larger than the average population. You can also see that Northeast was relatively high as well. As a result, our strategy included options that reduced the population in the Southeast District and increased it in the Central District. To this end, we developed a total of eleven options, not including the existing map. We also took other factors into consideration like future growth and what we're calling communities of interest. In terms of future growth, we know we'll continue to see significant growth predominantly in Southeast Sioux Falls, but there will also be steady growth in the Northeast and the Northwest. The Central District, however, will not grow at quite the same rate. Our goal then is to be, became to get the Southeast District as low as possible, allowing room for that additional growth, while keeping the Central District close to the average, but still a bit on the higher side. We also considered the Central District as a community of interest, meaning we tried to keep precincts with similar interests such as downtown together as one district. You can see from the eleven options that three did not meet the criteria found in the charter. The commission ultimately agreed upon option C-eleven-A at our September meeting, but after a closer analysis, it was found that one precinct did not need to move. The commission made a minor adjustment, or a minor amendment, that is, to the option, resulting in what we have here, option C-eleven-A-one, at the conclusion of the hearing. Several weeks before the October hearing, I noted that precinct five thirteen originally set to move from central to southeast, and that option eleven-A did not have to move. In other words, it could be kept in the Central District where it is now, with all the criteria still being met. I had the proposed amendment posted online and discussed it immediately prior to the public hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, the commission voted to approve this option, which in essence, if you look at this map, moves precinct one-three from the Southwest District to the Northwest District, precinct two-seven from the Southeast District to the Northeast District, precinct three-six from Northwest to Central, as well as precincts four-one and four-fourteen from Northeast to the Central District, and precinct five-eleven from Central to Southwest, a total of six precincts. You can also see that the deviations are well within the five percent required by the charter. There's no action required by the council tonight, however, per the charter, you may disapprove the plan within twenty-one days. I'm confident, however, you'll find the commission did its due diligence in developing a sensible plan that will hopefully hold up for the remainder of this decade. On behalf of all five appointees to the Districting Commission, I want to thank you, it's been our honor to serve. I also want to thank the city staff, in particular, Tom Greco and Jeff Schmidt, who, their expertise and leadership made this a smooth process despite that census delay. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mark, thank you, and thanks for your volunteer work as the chair, really appreciate it. Little disappointed your names were more creative, like the state legislature with all the birds and the project grouse and blackbird and all that, but.
Lot less controversy, though.
Okay, lot less controversy. I will, I will agree. Yeah, no action tonight, no public input on this. Counselors, I don't know if you have any discussion or comments for?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
I did want to, I, I did want to speak and just say thank you to the committee, I did attend the last two of their meetings, and they really were doing their due diligence and did a thoughtful job, and it was really kind of fun to watch them work through all the variations and nuances and, and come up with what appeared to me to be just a very sensible decision. And, and in the presentation that Mark just gave, I think he laid that out really nice for all of us council members to, to see what they did. And I, I kind of saw him firsthand in the trenches doing it, and really appreciated their efforts and wanted to be sure that I said that publicly when they presented to us. And I think they, they led us well through the process tonight, and we can all be very comfortable that, and confident in the, in the results that they came up with. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the council here? All right, Mark, thanks again, we really appreciate your time, sir. All right, with that, Counsel, we got any new business to tackle here? Hearing none, we'll move to public input. Public input tonight will be three minutes per person, and on items we didn't discuss earlier in the agenda. So anyone from general public input, come on forward. Good evening.
Good evening, again, my name is Lanny Strickers. I wanted to address code enforcement in the city, and I already mentioned the address at the corner of Seventh and Duluth with the retaining wall that's been down for several years and was repaired, and has been down again for a couple more years, and has not been, the city's not enforcing to do something about it. In addition to that, I want to talk about six-thirty North Prairie, the corner of Third and Prairie, which I've contacted the city on. Starting in the end of twenty nineteen or the beginning of twenty twenty, I called code enforcement on that property and the fact that there's so much trucks and garbage and junk in the yard, and the fact that it had not been taken care of. I called again a couple, three months afterwards, and they said they were working on it. I called summer of twenty twenty, and was told that it was being addressed in the court system. Now, this, just recently, I found out, because I don't go by there anymore, but I, I don't live in the area anymore, so I went by there and I so I went by there, and I found out that it's still not been addressed, and it's worse yet. So I sent an email to you counselors about it, and I sent an email to, I received an email from Matt Tobias telling me I could talk to the, he's the head of the revitalization manager for the city, he said I could call the city attorney's office about it, which I did, I called Attorney Coystra, and left a message for a callback, he did not call me back, but I did receive a email from Bonnie Woolam, a paralegal in his office, and she said that it's in the court system, well, that's not, I mean, that's a year and a half ago, I was told it's in the court system. I mean, somebody's got to address this. So, I emailed Jim Davidson, asking him to forward my, her email to me and my email back to her, to the mayor and to the council, so that you could see what was going on. I then also emailed the mayor, asking for a callback, and I called the city attorney's office again, asking for a callback, and I called the mayor's office, asking for a callback, I answered back from no one. And I don't understand, when citizens have a concern, I mean, I'm, I've lived in this city for 80 years, well, not quite, I, I've moved away several times, but I was born 80 years ago here.
Lanny, thanks for your comments tonight.
Well, I'd like an answer on, on why you can't call me back.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
That's all you get, I stayed here for four hours listening to you, and you can't even listen to my...
It's not a dialogue at public input, sir, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Michael Stangland, concerned Sioux Falls citizen. Because a few months ago, it was reported by the Argus Leader that it was decided by the city to spend $50,000 of taxpayer money to study vaccine hesitancy. Then more recently, it was reported that the city decided it needed a shotmobile, as I refer to it, sending a vehicle around to Sioux Falls to get shots to people who have decided not to get them yet, which is of course more taxpayer money being spent. So, I have to ask, how much of this city's taxpayer money, our taxpayer money, is the city prepared to waste trying to sell COVID shots to people who have decided they have absolutely no interest in getting them? The shots have been available for nearly a year now, and we're pretty well long past, you know, any obstacles that would prevent people from getting the shot if they want them. We currently have a federal government that is trying, thankfully failing, to try and force the shot upon holdouts through mandates that would require people to decide whether they want to remain unshot or remain employed. I happen to be one of the holdouts who has no intention of getting a COVID shot. As one of those vaccine hesitant, that it was decided to spend $50,000 studying, allow me to provide some free research information. There is nothing that anyone in this city can do to convince me to change my mind. I am someone who is prepared to lose my job if my employer mandated that I get a shot to remain employed. I mean, at this point, all that $50,000 and shotmobile have done is cement my decision not to get the shot. And at this point, the strange widespread effort to get everyone taking that shot has become as much a reason for me not to take it as any of the original legitimate reasons that I remain a holdout. I mean, I certainly can't speak for everyone, but I know I am far from alone in my sentiments on this. And if you've paid any attention to world events, I'm sure you know that as well. So again, I have to ask, how much of our taxpayer money is the city prepared to waste trying to convince people that are set on the matter? It's really a question need to ask if you value fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for your evening.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you for your time, have a good evening.
So I know that I have the city and my neighborhood giving people letters to fix up their retainer walls and their sidewalks, and code enforcement, so that's why we do a neighborhood walk audit. So, North Prairie Avenue is not in my neighborhood association, but I do know that stuff is tied up in a court system that take 18 months to three years sometimes on issues, that's just how it is here in good old South Dakota. So I want to get to Mayor Tinnheken again on what happened last Wednesday. So, tall grass, I don't know nothing about tall grass, what's happening there, but I do know that I was sitting right here, and there was two gentlemen that walked up, and then the lady that works with Jason Bieber, that is a new employee, got up and went to this podium and said, what are you here for? And he says, well, I'm here about tall grass, I live across the street. She said, well, you can't talk about that item because it's on the casino agenda. So she took him in the back there, and we cannot be making people silent, I'm going to tell you right now, the city does try to lobby you. They try to make you not come here, I know for a fact, I don't care what the mayor, nobody says, because I dealt with it. In my neighborhood, about a coffee shop in my neighborhood, and Cathedral with their witch wine-drinking people want everything in God's creation to happen, and Cathedral and Pettigrew is two different people here. We're beer drinkers, we're not wine drinkers, so I don't care what Cathedral does or says about a coffee shop, it's in my neighborhood, and if I say it doesn't go, and the people that live on the blocks says it doesn't go, it doesn't go. So, they sat down there, and he said, so I can't talk about it, and, and, and she said, no, you can't. This is the first time I went to a planning and commission meeting here. So, when I came here, the, the commission people said, does anybody from the citizens want to pull something off the agenda item to talk about it? And then they turned around to the board members, the chair, and says, does anybody want to talk about anything on the agenda? That, those two people should have been able to talk about whatever they want to talk about, about tall grass that lives across the street from that place. Jason Bieber and them goes to these meetings, and then they, not very transparent, I, you'll have to ask them, whenever you go to these meetings before you go to the city council, what is the first reading and what is the second reading in the city council? Because they will tell you the second reading and make you come to second reading, and then you done forgot about first reading. If you haven't noticed, white people's not here on first reading, it's because the city doesn't allow you to tell you that. I then got into arguments with Jason Bieber about that, that is not very transparent here, so we need to work on that to better communicate with people. Just look in first reading, how many people's here versus second reading.
Anyone else tonight?
Good evening.
My name is Chad Bishop, I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. Please understand my intention here is to ask intelligent questions and not to question your intelligence. There are a handful of policy recommendations, including classifying all COVID-19 recovered city employees as being equivalent to the voluntarily vaccinated, as well as reimbursing all city employees for SARS-CoV-2 antibody and adaptive T-cell response assays. To update the city's stated medical strategy to include COVID-19 recovered in the calculation for community immunity, and to also engage the South Dakota Department of Health in a serological campaign. You represent nearly 200,000 citizens, or roughly 23% of the citizens of South Dakota, so what you do here matters. Stanford's John Ioannidis characterizes risk stratification of COVID-19 as 10,000-fold between an 80-year-old with comorbidities and a metabolically healthy 10-year-old child. On October 29th, the FDA approved the emergency use authorization for Pfizer BioNTech vaccine for 5- to 11-year-olds. On October 17th, the Argus Leader reported what, on what they called the Wall of South Dakota Immunity. What that means is better than 99% of all South Dakotans who have either been vaccinated or recovered from COVID-19 have not tested positive or tested positive a second time. On October 22nd, the Argus Leader reported on the dropping number of cases in our public schools. By now, it's obvious that the infection among school-aged population is dependent on what is happening in our wider community and not on school masks. The implication being that this population probably has the highest rate of prior immunity, but again, why don't we know? Why was the serology not done as a matter of policy? You've heard me argue that the absolute risk reduction offered to the COVID-19 recovered by having them vaccinated with the current vaccines on offer is negligible, there is only risk. I have argued it is therefore unethical to mandate their vaccination, or by logical extension, to vaccinate without screening first for prior immunity. Now extend this logic to the lowest-risk demographic category, children. Given this and the public data visible below, is this still an emergency in South Dakota? Warranting the vaccination of children, the E in EUA stands for emergency. Does the current status in South Dakota warrant the risks associated with a vaccine approved for the lowest-risk demographic under such conditions? For those with autoimmune issues or documented comorbidities perhaps, but the 5- to 11 population at large? That's a question there. We're at a point where the most vulnerable have been vaccinated or have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. We are now mandating the vaccination and violation of rights to protect those who will not protect themselves. How long until the continuously overreaching federal executive tries to implement the California mandate for children nationwide? Everything is on the table, apparently. A moral society does not ask our children to pay our generation's debts, and we do not shield adults by asking our children to take upon themselves a risk for no appreciable benefit to themselves. The vaccines, Danuk, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone else here for general public input tonight? All right, see none, look for a motion adjourned.
Move to adjourned.
Second Jensen. All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen, we'll have to roll call, vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, A.D., we're adjourned, have a good night, everyone.